We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Aquino.
Yeah.
And Howell.
Here. If you'll all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda update, Mr. City Attorney, other than the fact that we're moving item 10B in advance of 9A?
None, other than what you described, yes, madam.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to remind everybody that if anybody has any item that they want to speak on, there should be blue speaker cards on the table over here. If you could fill one up and hand it to our police officer, that'd be wonderful. And with that, we'll start with business from the floor. And we have one request to speak, and that is from Muriel Bronstein. Welcome down, Muriel, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. Some of us in the audience here today, residents, are supporting by district elections for the following reasons. The California Voting Rights Act protects voting rights for minority items, number one. Number two, by district elections are less expensive for cities because fewer ballots need to be printed each year, each election. Number three, by district elections honors the principle of one person, one vote, by ensuring that voters have one representative who is specifically accountable to the voters and the neighborhoods that elected him or her. We hope that the Folsom City Council will begin the process toward forming, going from at-large to by district elections. Thank you.
Thanks, Muriel. And the other cards I have are all from four specific agenda items, so no one else from business from the floor. Okay, with that, we will move to scheduled presentations. And the first is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom regarding encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day, and I've asked Councilmember Kozlowski to do that presentation. I think that's our city arborist. Anna Nunez, did I get that right? Because Mike's cheating, and he actually has the piece of paper in front of him, and I do not.
Okay. I can talk loud. Is it loud enough?
I don't know, you can move the microphone over if you want to.
Mike, you can use the stand mic over there if you want.
Oh, gotcha. Let's trade spots.
All right.
All right. Fantastic. Okay, so I am the Lorax, and I speak for the trees today.
Now, you're the tallest one, you look more like a tree.
This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day. I'm presenting it to Amy Nunez, our city arborist, today. The proclamation reads, "In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. In 1907, President Theodore Roosevelt proclaimed this as a national time to plant trees. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and will be celebrated in Folsom on Saturday, April 13, 2019. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature citywide, catch rainwater, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect us from harmful effects of the sun on our skin. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes and furniture, and sequestering air and soilborne carbon. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And trees will be, excuse me, we will be planting a ceremonial tree at B.T. Collins Park and pruning young trees in Folsom along East Bidwell Street in celebration of Arbor Day. Now, therefore, I, in place of Kerry Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim April 13, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Folsom, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, planting a tree of their own, or at our city Arbor Day planting. And further, I urge all citizens to enjoy the cool shade of trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations as Folsom becomes a Tree City, USA, for the 13th year in a row. So proclaimed this 26th day of March, 2019." And here's your session.
So, yes, Arbor Day is being celebrated, April 13. I encourage everyone to come out and help us celebrate our urban forest, and bring your appetites. Lunch is going to be provided, so hopefully that sweetens the deal. Thank you.
Fantastic, all right, great.
Thank you, and with, and our next item is going to be a proclamation of April 4 through 13 as Creek Week in the city of Folsom, and Councilmember Gaylord will be presenting that one.
So I will be presenting this to Glenn, and he will be accepting the proclamation of the mayor for the city of Folsom proclaiming April 4 through 13 as Creek Week. I got the luxury of traveling about 16 miles on an impromptu bike ride on Willow Creek Trail, and I got to see all the creeks through there, and they're gorgeous right now, so if anyone wants to check it out, don't miss it. So Sacramento Area Creek Council is a nonprofit organization working to preserve, protect, and restore urban streams with the riparian habitat, and whereas urban creeks, including Willow, Humbug, Hinkle, Linda, Alder, and Gold Creeks in the city of Folsom are important amenity in our community, providing recreation, wildlife habitat, and many other benefits. And whereas Folsom's creeks flow into the American River and important sources, or, I'm sorry, an important source of drinking water, fisheries, and recreation resources in the region. And whereas actions we take to promote Creek Week health, sorry, Creek Health and to benefit our rivers, and whereas citizens are being called upon to be a part of the area-wide volunteer effort to improve and enhance our urban waterways by clearing trash and debris as well as removing invasive exotic plants. And whereas the city of Folsom is a platinum sponsor of the area creek council's Creek Week activities, helping to cover costs and publicize the events and provide lunch to volunteers, providing staff to guide and assist citizens with the April 13, 2019 cleanup of Folsom area creeks, collecting and disposing of debris and providing other materials and services as needed. And whereas the Sacramento Area Creeks Council has designated April 4 through 13, 2019 Creek Week in the Sacramento region, therefore, I, Roger Gaylord, on behalf of Kerry Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, and the Folsom City Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 4 through 13, 2019 as Creek Week in the city of Folsom, and we call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the activities, fun, and adventure during the special week set aside to benefit our creeks and rivers proclaimed this 26th day of March, 2019.
Thank you very much for this proclamation. We enjoy a very high quality of life here in Folsom, and one of the reasons we enjoy that, I like to think, and I'd like many of us to think, is the creeks that we have and the trails that we go near them. They are very beautiful this time of year, the wildflowers are out, the grass is green, and the creeks are really looking good. So that's just one amenity that we have. And those things don't happen by accident, they take the leadership of the city council. So I'd like to really thank the city council here for leading us and keeping these creeks, because there are many communities out there where the creeks are paved in concrete or put into pipelines, but here, they're out in the open, they're out there for us to enjoy. So every year, we have a Creek Week cleanup, and, oh, bad. And where we do go around, there's about 100 volunteers who go around the city, picking up creek and making the creeks really look nice again. So we are looking for more volunteers, we, the Sacramento Creeks Council has a website, so if you could go there and volunteer, and then we are cleaning up on Saturday, April 13, along with Arbor Day and other activities by the city. And just really want to appreciate all the help and the support the city's done over the years for Creek Week. Thank you.
And with that, we will move to the consent calendar, or does anybody want to pull anything from consent? Pardon? Anybody?
Nope.
If no one's pulling anything, does somebody want to make a motion?
I will move adoption of the consent calendar.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, oops, sorry, that's right, we're doing voice vote now, all the time. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And that moves us to item eight, public hearing.
Your public hearing tonight is item 8A. This is ordinance number 1292, an uncodified ordinance adopting prima facie speed limits on Blue Ravine Road and on Iron Point Road. This will be introduction and first reading.
Point of order, can I just ask, can you explain the purpose of a first reading and what the actual action is ultimately here?
I could, but I'm going to ask the city attorney to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. It's actually statutory requirement that every ordinance be introduced at one meeting and then be reread again at a separate meeting, so that if there's any change to be made, it can be made before final adoption.
Gotcha. So is a vote necessary this evening, then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Mark Rackevan, engineering manager with your Public Works Department. This evening, we're here to adopt updated speed limits on Iron Point Road and on Blue Ravine Road. The speed limits that are being recommended by staff this evening do not change any of the current posted speed limits on those two roads. This is a legally mandated update that we're required to do on at least a 10-year basis. This is the first of several such items that we'll be bringing to you this year. These are the first two roads that we have recommendations for you. By the end of the year, we'll have adopted updated speed limits on all of our major roads north of Highway 50 and probably some of the new roads in the south of 50 area. Since this is the first of these items, and it's been 10 years since we've done a comprehensive update of our speed limits, I thought it would be appropriate to give a presentation on the statutory regulations associated with speed limits, the procedure that we go through, and, you know, hopefully clear up some misconceptions about what speed limits are for and what they can accomplish. And then ultimately, we'll get to the main event, which is the recommended speed limits on the two streets that are the subject of this ordinance. So again, the last time our comprehensive speed surveys were performed was in 2010. Our traffic officers have been using those speed surveys, but the Sacramento County Traffic Court has advised them that it's time to update the surveys in order to continue to use radar for speed enforcement. Again, I will go through several slides explaining exactly what an engineering and traffic survey is, also known as a speed survey, and then we'll adopt, or we'll get to the recommendations. So this is the basic speed law, California Vehicle Code 22350. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I have highlighted the most important phrase in there, reasonable and prudent. Fortunately, or unfortunately, the state has taken upon themselves to define what the term reasonable and prudent means when it comes to adopting speed limits. They've set the 85th percentile as the critical speed. This is the, this is a statistical measure that means 85% of the traffic do not exceed a certain speed, and they've defined that as meaning reasonable and prudent. And I think we could probably spend the evening debating whether or not 85% of the motorists out there on a given day, on a given road, drive reasonably and prudently. But nevertheless, this is what the law is based off of, this is what speed surveys are based off of, this is what we need to adhere to. So some of the factors influencing speed, and when I, in tonight's case, we're talking about free-flow speed, so the speed that any of us as a motorist would drive on a road under unconstrained conditions, no heavy traffic, no presence of law enforcement or construction, no adverse weather, just, you know, in the absence of anything, what speed do you feel is the appropriate speed to drive on a street? Now, some of the factors that affect that free-flow condition are the actual geometric conditions of the road, its width, its vertical and horizontal alignment, the surrounding environment, are you in a dense urban setting or in a rural grassland? Traffic controls, how frequently are there stop signs or traffic signals? And then other factors, are there driveways? Are there people parking on that street? Are there large concentrations of bicycles and pedestrians? So you take in, as a whole, all of these factors, I mean, you could take a street like I Street down in downtown Sacramento, which is a dense urban setting, frequent traffic control, high volumes of pedestrians, and people are not going to drive on that street, as, on a street here in Folsom that's the same width, but in a more suburban or rural setting with lower volumes of pedestrians and less traffic controls. It just, all of these factors control how you feel you should drive on that street. So why do we need engineering and traffic surveys? Again, it is to enforce the speed limit through the use of radar, the California Vehicle Code prescribes that. Also determining the prevailing or prima facie speed. Again, this is a speed, prima facie is a Latin term, meaning on the face of it. So in the absence of any other regulation or posted sign, what is the speed that the majority of people feels reasonable and prudent on a given street? And again, what we're trying to accomplish here is to find that right speed limit that encourages uniform driving behavior. I mean, ideally, if we posted 45 miles per hour, everybody would be going 45, but we know that that's not the case, there's going to be variation. Ideally, though, if we've posted the speed limit to match the characteristics of that road, people will generally adhere to that posted limit. So, and again, you know, this is just to demonstrate, the California Vehicle Code is the one that has the most regulations associated with definitions of speeds and speed limits, it defines how engineering and traffic surveys are to be performed, and how you are to handle the 85th percentile once you've calculated it. The manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and the California Manual for Setting Speed Limits, they set the policies and methodologies and the procedures for gathering this information. And then lastly, the reason we're here this evening, the Folsom Municipal Code assigns the responsibility to the city council for adopting speed limits that are based off of a valid engineering and traffic survey. What is an engineering traffic survey, commonly known as a speed survey? This is an example of one speed survey for one section of road, it's just a two-page document, but it is an engineering document, it is signed and stamped by a licensed engineer, and it's a legal document. Once all these surveys are adopted by the local agency, they are provided to the traffic court for that jurisdiction, in our case, Sacramento County Traffic Court, and our officers refer to these surveys when defending any sites that they've issued that are based off of speed violations.
Mark, just before you get off of that, and it's only because every now and then we get questions about the use of an engineer stamp on documents, you and I and Dave and Marcus and whatever other engineers are in the room know this, but whether or not the engineer has actually stamped a document, if it is in fact a licensed engineer, whether or not the stamp has been used, we are responsible for whatever's in that document, and if there's misinformation or errors, purposeful errors in that document, we're subject to the potential for discipline by the state of California, the Board of Registration for Professional Engineers. So just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, very good point.
Even if there's no stamp.
Right. So I know these are hard to read, I apologize for that, so that's why I've highlighted what each area of the survey depicts. I would note also that each of these surveys was performed by a licensed engineer that the city retained, Mr. Chris Kinzel of TJKM. He has extensive experience in multiple jurisdictions performing such surveys, and so he was the most qualified, or his firm was the most qualified, to perform these surveys on our behalf. This first page of this example survey, the top just describes the street and the section of road that was surveyed. Area 2 summarizes some of the prevailing speed statistics, and I'll go into that on the next page. They document what the daily traffic volume is and the length, and what the street classification is, is it a arterial, a collector, a residential street? The collision history is documented, it's a five-year collision history, and then it is used to calculate what the accident rate on that road is, and the accident rate is then compared to a statewide average. In this case, there were 49 accidents on this stretch of road over a five-year period. It came to a rate of 1.14 accidents per million vehicle miles. It's a, it's a real mouthful, but it's a standard term of art that, it's a common denominator so that all agencies can compare their accident rates against averages and against other agencies. In this case, the statewide average for this type of road is 1.61. So in this example, the accident rate is much lower than the state average. Section D, or what I called out as Area 5, describes the roadway conditions, the adjacent land uses, in this case, residential with some shopping centers and a middle school, the roadway conditions, four lanes with a center turn lane, periodic traffic controls. And then the engineer has put in some comments about, based on his findings, what he recommends should happen, what he would recommend for the speed limit. And then at the bottom, you see Mr. Kinzel's signature and his stamp, along with his recommendations. The second page is the one where the real meat of the report is, again, describing the location. What's important up here is the time of day. The surveys are not done during peak hours, we don't want congestion to affect the speed of traffic. Again, we're looking for that free-flow speed. So this survey was done on a Thursday in front of Folsom Middle School, but between 1:30 and 3:20, so they were after lunch and before the student pickup, so they were able to get free-flow conditions. Also important, it was clear and dry conditions. Again, weather was not affecting people's driving behavior, and the road conditions were dry, because again, wet pavement affects people's driving behavior. Section 2 describes the speed broken down into individual speeds, so the top here is 10 miles per hour, the bottom is 70, and then you can see the breakdown of the speeds. The length of each of these bars is the number of cars that were going at that speed. So I think the longest one here, having an eye check here, I think that's 42, and 16 vehicles that were going 42 miles per hour. Those of you who have a background in statistics will note the standard bell curve of statistical, you know, it's a valid statistical sample, that's what we're after here. We're not, we're not surveying every motorist that's traveling on that road on, in a given day, they're sampling between 100 and 200 vehicles traveling at free-flow speed, and that represents a valid statistical sample that the engineer can fall back on as defensible. And then lastly, these really tiny numbers down here are the statistical averages, the 50th percentile, you know, the mean speed, the 85th percentile, and then a number called the 10 mile-per-hour pace, which is a bracket of 10 miles per hour, or 10 speeds that the most cars were traveling in. So that'd be this area right here in the middle, where you can see that densest concentration of speeds. But again, the 85th percentile is the important number here, per the California Vehicle Code. I've zoomed in here a little bit to show you, in this particular example, 85th percentile is 46 miles per hour. So now, the next step in the process is we have to round to the nearest five mile-per-hour increment to start talking about what the appropriate speed limit should be. So on this line, I've plotted out where that 46, 85th percentile is. Clearly, the nearest five mile-per-hour increment in this example is 45, if you're just rounding down to 45. Now, the law does allow the, an engineer to do one more five mile-per-hour downward zoning if the engineer has determined that there are factors present that are not readily apparent to the motorist that should affect the posted speed limit. In this case, if we were to do that, we could, you know, it would drop down to 40 miles per hour. Let's look what that does to the example we've been using. So the 40 miles per hour is this orange line, you'll see if we were to have that justification, whether it were right or wrong, we'd now be saying that half of the motorists out there are exceeding this speed limit, where we know that the actual 85th percentile is closer to 45 miles per hour. So one of the things the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, be very careful if you're trying to do that extra five mile an hour downward zoning, because you can create a situation where there's going to become a disproportionate number of collisions, because you're going to get a wider variation in speeds. Some people are going to be trying to drive at that prima facie prevailing speed, which is clearly closer to 45. Others are going to be trying to adhere to a posted speed limit for whatever reason, and so you're going to get this large variation in speed. So it is allowed, it isn't encouraged, and there's a lot of cautions that go with it. And then the other example would be if you had an 85th percentile speed that was in the 48 or 49 range, the nearest increment would be a rounding up, and again, you could get a downward zoning for engineering reasons. The law also says you can just downward zone and then take no further reductions regardless of any engineering factor. So under this scenario, if you had an 85th percentile that is 48 or 49, the lowest you could go is 45. You could not, under any circumstance, justify anything lower than 45. Okay, so I'm going to pause there for a second, because I know that's some pretty heady stuff, and it's all the general principles. Before we get into the specifics of Iron Point and Blue Ravine Road, does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. So you only do it over two hours, not multiple days?
Right.
Is that the standard?
Yeah.
Does that seem like two hours every 10 years? Doesn't that seem like a lot?
You'd be surprised how consistent it is. If the roadway hasn't changed, you know, again, we're looking at Blue Ravine Road over by Folsom Middle School, that roadway hasn't changed in width, or number of lanes, or traffic controls for probably more than 10 years. And so, you know, traffic drives on that street at the speed that they feel is reasonable and prudent, and that number doesn't change over time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I dig in a little deeper?
I have one. How do you account for the sort of chicken and egg nature of testing the prevailing speed on a road that has a posted speed limit already?
A good question, and I've actually experienced that a lot in my years here at the city. As the city's grown, a lot of it, it is initial engineering judgment, you know, look at a given street, like when Iron Point Road was extended, and we said, okay, well, what are some other roads in the town that look a lot like Iron Point Road? And what did we establish as a speed limit on those? And so we'll put that in as an initial posting and then survey, or in some cases, we'll just leave it unposted and let the traffic find its own prevailing speed, and then survey it and set it.
So when the, when the initial or previous testing of Blue Ravine happened, was there a posted speed limit at that time, or did this one get a great guess?
Oh, this one, Blue Ravine Road has been surveyed as far back as I've been here. Originally, Folsom Police Department did their own radar surveys and established the speed limits here in town, but then I think it was determined, you're having the agency that enforcing the speed limits also setting them, and so it fell to the engineering department to start doing surveys. So we did those in 2000 and in 2010, and this year, we decided, well, let's bring in an outside, unbiased consulting firm to see what results they get.
This portion of Blue Ravine has been paved, that I'm aware of, for at least 35 years.
Yeah.
Though this was before Blue Ravine actually extended to Folsom Boulevard. Used to stop at East Bidwell.
Got it. I just think that, I'm not sure that that was really an answer to the question I asked the- the ability--
It's been posted for forty-five for a very, very long time.
The original question I asked, which was, how do you avoid the chicken-and-egg testing of a road that has a posted speed limit? How do you get a prima facie a speed limit when people are encouraged already specifically to not exceed forty-five miles per hour in this instance? If it were posted at forty miles an hour for two weeks and you did this test, would the eighty-fifth percentile be forty-two miles an hour or forty-one?
It's possible, but again, you know, we'd have to disable what was an adopted speed limit, adopted by ordinance, signed by an engineer, and endorsed by the city council, you know, so we'd have to, you know, unravel all of that and adopt a temporary limit and notify the public. So I don't know that there's--
I'm not suggesting we do any of that. I'm just wondering how it's been addressed in terms of the statistical analysis, because that's like saying that, you know, the flow of a pipe, you know, put in six-inch pipe and you're going to get six inches' worth of water at whatever pressure you deliver it at.
If I could just jump in here, maybe to help, I think what you would see is increased accident rates, there'd be other factors involved that's looked at during the traffic study that would kind of become glaring, especially over such a long period of time in a number of years and a number of surveys being done, that people will drive that speed because it's comfortable. There's comfortable, the comfortability of the ride, the weather, the geometrics work--
I fully understand the principle of it, and I'm not suggesting that there's anything faulty about the actual test that was done. I'm just curious about how you overcome the fact that you've already told people how fast to drive.
Anecdotally, I suspect that if you were to poll, you know, a certain population of people driving, like in this particular case, and ask them, what's the posted speed limit? I don't know. Just, I drive forty-five.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now? Okay. So here we are for tonight. We're talking specifically about Iron Point Road and Blue Ravine Road. Those are just the first two roads that we have information to share with you on. In this case, Mr. Kinsel has identified five distinct segments of Blue Ravine Road and seven distinct segments of Iron Point Road, and conducted a survey for each of those distinct segments. And here's a summary of his findings. You'll see, for the most part, there are situations where the eighty-fifth percentile was rounded up and then set back down, as in that second example I gave, or was rounded to the nearest lower speed. Mr. Kinsel did not identify any engineering factors that would allow for further downward zoning. Those findings were reviewed by your staff as well, and we concluded that for these particular road sections, none of these roads has gone through a significant change since the last surveys were done, so there are no justifications that were not present back in 2010 that we should cite now. I'll get back to that with one particular section of Blue Ravine Road, which is about to go through a fairly significant change, and it may lead us to do a new radar survey out there this summer. But for now, the conclusions are maintain all of the existing speed limits on these twelve sections of road.
Mark, can I ask you a question on that? So line number two, existing is forty-five, eighty-fifth percentile is fifty-one, so you could recommend fifty.
We could.
But you're, okay. And then there's another one on there. So number eight, currently thirty, you could round that one to thirty-five if you wanted to.
You could, but again, you know, that's a case where you're rounding upward to the nearest, and then the law permits you to immediately go back down five miles an hour with no further justification. So that one is correct for thirty. I should note on item number nine, you see a range of speeds. We do have a short forty-mile-per-hour zone in the vicinity of the Dick's Sporting Goods Shopping Center through the Target store, you know, so basically through the East Bidwell intersection, because, you know, the rest of that stretch of Blue Ravine Road is generally rural on the south side, right, because of the creek, and on the north side, it's generally residential. But as we come into that area, it becomes retail, there's higher driveway density, there's more traffic signals, so we've had a short forty-mile-per-hour zone in there, and Mr. Kinsel's just acknowledging that and recognizing that we can still maintain that short speed So the findings and conclusions are that we have reviewed these draft speed surveys and approved them. The Traffic Safety Committee recommended maintaining the current speed limits. That was not without some discussion. It was a good discussion, ended up in a six-one vote to maintain the speed limits. We did talk about, particularly with Blue Ravine Road over near, from Oak Avenue to East Natoma Street, whether or not conditions existed that could allow for those engineering factors to go down to forty miles per hour. The committee very strenuously said, no, that doesn't feel like the right speed limit at this time. Forty-five feels appropriate. The police department representative didn't feel that forty would hold up in court, and so the vote was to maintain the speed limit. The sole dissenting vote was the bicycle and pedestrian advocate on the committee who just stated that, hey, anything that's a lower speed limit has got to be beneficial for bikes and peds, and so she was favoring a lower speed limit. The committee did take two further actions. We are going to bring that stretch of Blue Ravine Road back, actually later this week at this month's Traffic Safety Committee meeting, for further discussion of possible safety improvements. And then again, I mentioned earlier, that stretch of road is about to go through a fairly significant change. This summer, we're resurfacing the road, and when we, after the road is resurfaced, instead of reinstalling the striping as it is today, we're going to install it with narrower vehicle lanes, so eleven, we're going to go down to eleven-foot vehicle lanes. At some stretches, they're fourteen feet wide now. We're going to go down to eleven-foot vehicle lanes, create a buffer between the vehicle lanes and the bike lane, and then have a slightly wider bike lane. That effect of the narrower lanes and that bike lane buffer could, I say could, affect people's prevailing speeds. So once the striping is in place and people have adjusted to it, we're recommending we'll go back out and do another speed survey. And if the results come back lower, then we'll come back to you with a recommendation to create a lower speed zone there. So that was another recommendation that came out of the Traffic Safety Committee discussion about the speed limits on this road.
I'm happy to hear that, Mark. The only reminder I'm going to give you, because you and I lived through this before, is we tried that on Glen, and it didn't change the speeds at all.
Right.
And I think it's actually already been done on the lower part of Flower, between Willow Creek and Blue Ravine. I think that was restriped like a year ago. And again, that's because that's my neighborhood. It hasn't slowed the traffic down in that segment. Not that it's that bad, but, you know, there's a lot of people traveling faster than I am at twenty to twenty-five.
Right. Yeah, and I certainly don't want to give any false expectations. It's just something that we feel is going to be a potential, a significant change in the character of that road, so we feel compelled to resurvey it.
When do you see that striping and retesting happening approximately?
Probably late summer.
I have a question. You've sort of alluded, and maybe this is actually a question for the police chief, but you've alluded to the fact that the Sacramento Court wasn't satisfied with the speed surveys that we have, because they're dated, and that enforcement somehow would be compromised without taking this, you know, adopting these speed limits right now. Could you expand on that a little bit? I'm not really getting where a dated speed survey, or the fact that one now exists, isn't defensible somehow.
Right. It's specified in a section of the California Vehicle Code. Off the top of my head, I think it's Section 40800 that states that in order to use radar for speed enforcement, there must be a valid engineering and traffic survey, and it must be, have done within either the last five years if there's been a change in the road condition, or it can be as long as ten years if the road has stayed the same. So again, in all these cases--
So are you publicizing a get-out-of-jail-free card on a speeding ticket here?
Well, you know, if we adopt these, then no. And they are still valid. Remember, 2010 means we're good through the rest of this year. So they're just giving us a heads-up that we're pushing the boundaries of compliance with that section of the vehicle.
Okay. And do we, and this again is probably specifically, I mean, in terms of enforcement, do we have a lot of traffic citations for speed that get contested in this way?
That I couldn't tell you for certain. I do interact with our traffic enforcement officers quite frequently, and they do go down to Sacramento Court and defend a lot of sites. And so, you know, we're doing our part as engineers to give them the tools they need to properly enforce and defend them in court.
Gotcha.
You know, it is, you know, important also to note that radar enforcement isn't the only method of enforcement that police can do. It is simply the most efficient. You know, they can fall behind a suspected speeder and pace the car, and then have to go to court and explain the process that they went through, and you can imagine that that's more time-consuming, it's less safe for the officer, that this just is their preferred method, and again, it's something we've been asked to do for them, and we do it for them happily.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay. Where was I? So yeah, we're recommending that the council adopt the recommended speed limits of those twelve surveys, and then, as I stated earlier, you'll see me again for future roadways as the surveys get prepared by Mr. Kinsel and his staff and go through the process. I won't go through this presentation every time. This was just a primer for you, but in the future, we'll just be bringing the specific road segments and recommendations to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff?
I have one. Mark, what's the speed limit on Green Valley Road?
Off the top of my head, I think that is a fifty-five mile-per-hour--
So as people are coming into where it transitions into Blue Ravine, how do we slow those? I mean, you're just assuming they look at the speed limit sign, or do the lights kind of coordinate so that they're not just getting a green and they can just fly through that area, or?
Yeah, we do post signs warning people that there's a change in speed ahead, you know, what the speed limit, you know, it'll say, reduce speed ahead, forty-five mile-an-hour zone ahead. Beyond that, you know, yeah, there's not a lot we can do to convey, you know, or compel them to change their speed. Green Valley Road is a great example, because it is also about to go through a very significant change. It's about to be widened to four lanes, and so we'll be here after that project is complete and with a new radar survey for a four-lane Green Valley Road.
Okay.
And I'm going to make the same request that I always make before we do that speed survey. Please do increased enforcement out there, just to scare people into driving slower.
When is the Green Valley project slated for?
Right now, it's just on hold because of the weather. We actually have a contractor selected. He's done some preliminary site work, but this summer, they'll be really hitting it in earnest.
The tentative scheduled answer to that is, we'll be placing K-Rail out there at the end of April.
What's a K-Rail?
K-Rail's the barrier between--
A concrete barrier.
--traffic and the roadwork that'll be happening.
Got it. Okay, very good.
It's the movable concrete barrier.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question of, in representing the people that want to drive slow, okay? We have some fifty mile-an-hour, and all that does is, I go more than fifty mile, I go fifty-five, I go sixty, okay? Is it mandatory that if the way we use the formula, that we have to set the stage at that? Or is that because of liability that we might get into if we change it? Can we bring it down? If it says it should be fifty, could we know darn well if it qualifies for fifty, they're going to go faster?
Well, again, you know, we're trying to accomplish two really important things with whenever we set these speed limits. We're trying to create uniformity, you know, like, I'm going to use Folsom Boulevard as an example, because I think that is one of the fifty-mile-an-hour streets in town. It's generally a flat, straight road, and when you're out of the peak traffic conditions, yeah, it tends to allow for higher speeds. If everybody is traveling at around that speed, give or take five miles per hour, that's uniformity, and it's safe. And then again, the other aspect that we're trying to achieve is enforceability. So if we don't want to enable radar enforcement on a street, no, we don't have to adopt an enforceable speed limit, but be prepared that the consequence of that is, we may, again, set a speed limit that might be arbitrarily low, not defensible in any instance, either through speed enforcement or in the event of a collision. And then, you know, we're going to get that huge, or wider variation in speeds, which can lead to aggressive driving and unsafe lane changes and a higher collision rate.
Well, from Greenback to Blue Ravine is fifty miles an hour, and once you go past Greenback, I mean, Blue Ravine goes up to fifty-five.
You're not talking about Greenback, you're talking about Green Valley.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about Greenback. I don't go to Green Valley. If you go from, after Folsom Boulevard, you go over the bridge, that's fifty mile-an-hour up until down by, oh, you know, getting to the street. But you change from that point, fifty-five, until you get to Folsom Boulevard. Blue Ravine, it's fifty from Greenback all the way down to Blue Ravine, and then it switches all of a sudden to fifty-five, all the way to Folsom Boulevard, and it does the same way coming back. Okay? Is that because there's mostly trees and everything there? There's not a lot--
Right. Yeah, again, the roadside development changes as you go through those various sections, right? You know, there are some areas, like when you're on Folsom Auburn Road, you have development, you know, fairly light development on both sides of the road, but you do have development. You're going down a hill or up a hill, depending on direction. And then as you get down to Greenback Lane, you enter the area where the shopping center is, so the character of the road starts to change. So you may have two potentially different segments and two different radar surveys there. Going across the river on Lake Natoma Crossing, that's a whole nother survey there, a very unique condition. And then, once you get down onto Folsom Boulevard, it's generally the same once you get past Natoma Street. You have the state park land on the side until you get to Lake Forest Tech Center. So again, there's multiple surveys. We haven't received the most recent results for Folsom Boulevard, so I'm curious to see if anything has changed there. I don't, again, in what I'm stating, what I said earlier about Blue Ravine Road, usually traffic conditions don't change unless the road itself has changed. So I'm not expecting a huge change in recommended speed limits, but we'll see what Mr. Kinsel comes up with.
And more to come on these other streets that are not Blue Ravine and Iron Point. So reeling us back into Blue Ravine and Iron Point, do we have any more questions, staff, before I open the public hearing? Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. We have two requests to speak. The first is Eleanor Hopkins Vandenberg, and then Joanne Brauch. Welcome, and you will have three minutes.
This is where I should stand?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Eleanor Hopkins Vandenberg, and I am a member of FABA, which is the Folsom Area Bicycle Advocates. And I also have three young children that are ages three, five, and seven, and we regularly walk or use the bike trails, our bike lanes. We walk or bike to get to where we need to go in Folsom. And I'm concerned, because many of the roads here in Folsom are unsafe for people who are not traveling these roads in motor vehicles. The speed limits are too high along many roads that are expected to accommodate other users that are not in cars. And I'm disappointed that the recommendation being brought forward does not recommend a reduction in speed limit along the two roads in these current speed studies, at least with the way the roads are currently designed. Yes, we were talking about specifically along Blue Ravine, the current speed limit is forty-five miles an hour, and recommended to stay that way. But I wanted to express my concern about this, and also just in general, about how our roads are designed and how speed limits are based on how those roads are designed. I'm not sure if you're aware of the speeds at which collisions with bicycles and pedestrians are fatal. That was one thing that wasn't talked about. Talked about accidents with vehicles, but if a vehicle is traveling about twenty miles an hour or less, the chances of someone dying is about five percent. 20 miles an hour or less, the chances of someone dying is about 5%. At 30 miles an hour, the chances of dying is 40%. And then, at 40 miles an hour, 80% fatality rates. And then, once you're beyond 50 miles an hour, if you're struck by a vehicle, either on a bicycle or walking, you are pretty much guaranteed to die. And then, we talked about the 85% rule for determining what the speed should be. I know this is accepted, the accepted way of doing things mandated by the state, but the speed limits are set based on how fast people actually drive on the road, which has to do with how the roads are designed. So, if you design a road that makes people feel like they can drive fast, then of course they will. And if you make residential roads feel like highways, you know, being wide and with multiple lanes, people are going to drive like they're on a highway. And then, because they drive fast, the law is, you know, the speed limit gets set higher, which I don't think is how it should be. And road design definitely does affect this. Another thing that wasn't really discussed in the analysis and the background provided here was that it does not mention, like, nowhere really does it mention, traffic other than motor vehicles. So, it discusses, you know, minimizing the inconvenience to cars and other motor vehicles, but there's no mention of other users that are on the roads, like pedestrians along sidewalks or bicycles in bike lanes. And there are other users on these roads that do deserve equal consideration and arguably more consideration and priority since these users are not encased in the protective metal of a vehicle, and they're at much greater risk of bodily injury and death in the event of a collision. And people who can't drive or who choose to transport themselves in other ways other than in a car or motor vehicle are no less deserving than those people in cars. And it's a shame that our laws are so biased and heavily weighted towards granting vehicles the right-of-way. It's one thing to have higher speed limits on roads like highways where there aren't really other conflicting uses, like schools or shopping centers or other businesses that require people coming in and out. But where there are people using the roads who are not in cars, these higher speed limits really are not acceptable. Along Blue Ravine in particular, we're talking about the section between, like, by Oak Avenue Parkway where Folsom Middle School is. Children walk and bicycle there, and of course, I'm interested in that because I have two or three young children who really enjoy bicycling. And I want them to be able to have the freedom of mobility and feel safe getting themselves to where they need to go. Children, and, well, and everyone, really, shouldn't have to fear for their lives when they want to do something as basic as walking or biking to school or to work. And that doesn't need to be, there doesn't need to be such a conflict between cars and other road users, and it really comes down to infrastructure design, the way the roads are designed. There are lots of examples, other countries who have this figured out, countries like the Netherlands. A few decades ago, I'm not sure if you're aware, they made a really conscious and concerted effort as a country to increase the safety of their roads for everybody. And the result is a significant decrease in pedestrian and cyclist mortality rates and an increased quality of life. And actually, incidentally, I was just looking today, Dutch drivers are, they have the highest satisfaction rating on the Waze Driver Satisfaction Index, which I thought was kind of interesting, too. The Netherlands also has a clear set of guidelines that include separated bicycle and pedestrian tracks for roads that are over 18 miles an hour, like, they have it in kilometers an hour, but equivalent, 18 miles an hour. And if there are roads that are under that speed limit, you can find mixed modes of transportation on the roads, but there's, when they have that, there's clear signage and clear prioritizing of who has the right-of-way at the intersections and the crossings. And many local roads there also have speed limits of 10 miles an hour.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you near the end because we're going on six minutes here?
Oh, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, you can.
So, what are some common trips that you make within Folsom on foot or in bicycles with your kids or on bicycles?
We bike to and from school every day. So, school trips are probably the bulk of my trips every day, but also bike to get groceries, bike to sport activities for our children. There's swimming, there's karate, there's basically anywhere we need to go.
Which of, like, what would be considered arterial roads do you find yourself on doing that most often?
Well, we definitely avoid the ones like, that have a speed limit that's higher than, you know, 45 miles per hour. Unfortunately, even if we need to get to those roads, we'll avoid ones like East Bidwell, Blue Ravine, definitely Folsom Boulevard.
I'm not trying to back into where you live. I'm just trying to figure out if Blue Ravine is a path that you use that way.
Yeah, it would be. And East Bidwell, Blue Ravine would, but we find ourselves having to take a circuitous route because we, or also, we have a really nice trail system here, which I think is fantastic in Folsom. And sometimes, those trails actually let us get to where we need to go without, while minimizing our ability to go on the, we don't need to go on the road, we can use the trails, but we shouldn't have to take a circuitous route. We should be able to get to where we need to go while on the road. So, having, you know, safe bicycle lanes on any road would be great, but you can't have a safe bicycle lane when you have a speed that's over, you know, 40 miles an hour because if you get hit, you're going to die. And I would not put my children, especially because I'm biking my children most of the time, I would not put them on any of those roads.
Just as a side note, I was in Denmark last year, and it was a revelation. It was very confusing when I was riding in the taxi because it looked unfamiliar, but on foot, where I was, was, seemed much more protected for bicyclists particularly.
And they have, like, Denmark, Netherlands, they're probably the best European examples of infrastructure that actually works for both motorists and for pedestrians and cyclists.
Thank you.
Sorry, I won't take up any more time. That's pretty much my point, is that I definitely think, like, lowering the speed limit and even having an extra, you know, 30 seconds or a minute of time in a car is definitely worth saving someone's life. So, I want to urge you guys to really consider, question the way we design our streets and look at implementing better designs, which includes appropriate speed limits that accommodate all users equitably and safely. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Joanne Brouche.
So, I want to first address some of the points that Mark Raca Van made, because I attended the Traffic Safety Committee, and I take a little bit of an exception to some of the things that he characterized at that meeting. I won't, you've already had your education on the 85th percentile, I won't go through that. At the Traffic Safety Committee, I thought I was there to thank Mark for making a recommendation of a reduction to 40 miles per hour, because I had met with him in January, and we went through the whole 85th percentile, and he explained to me that as the engineer, he had the ability to round down or to make a five mile per hour recommendation downward, and that he intended to do that. And he invited me to attend the Traffic Safety Committee, and I was prepared to thank him for making that reduction. At the meeting, he did not make the 40 mile per hour reduction. He left the speeds as they were. And across the table, he and the Folsom Police Department representative alluded to a threshold by which officers use when considering whether or not they should issue a speeding citation. Now, I don't want to blow their cover and give everyone here and at home a heads-up as to exactly how fast any motorist can travel in a 45 mile per hour zone before a Folsom Police Department officer will issue a citation. But suffice to say, I was appalled by the revelation. The comment, "We're hesitant to issue citations for anything lower than that threshold because they can get thrown out of court." When I went home after meeting with Mark and I explained to my husband what this 85th percentile rule was, he literally said to me, "Honey, that's ludicrous. There's no way that's how speed limits are set. You must have misunderstood." I challenged him to look it up. There was no misunderstanding on my part. Again, in the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, there was discussion about the fact that speed limits in our areas of Blue Ravine, especially in the Big Valley Parkway area, that the threshold that was discussed was much to the consternation of the residents in the area. And it was at that point to which I replied to the officer that that's why I was there. I come to this meeting because, yes, I am related to the fatality incident that occurred on January 10, 2019, which, by the way, is not included in the speed study because the speed study took place prior to that fatality incident. But it's not the reason why I'm currently involved. It opened my eyes to what I believe is a bigger citywide safety issue. I was led to believe I didn't have a three-minute limit at this point in time, so I'm going to try and jump through my notes to what I think are some of the high points. Beverly Newman was the only Traffic Safety Committee member that stood up for people other than motor vehicleists. She was the only one that took the convoluted five-piece Blue Ravine vote and specifically asked to have the record state that she was opposed to not reducing the speed limit to 40 miles per hour from Prairie City Road to East Natoma, Natoma Street. I'm going to try to articulate the need that apparently eluded Mr. Raca Van for a reduction in speed on Blue Ravine from Natoma, East Natoma, all the way to Prairie City. I'm going to try and do this quickly. To answer your question, Sarah, as you come down Green Valley into Folsom, the speed limit is 50 miles per hour. There is no sign from Green Valley until the first 45 mile an hour speed limit sign that says, "Reduce speed ahead." There's no warning that it goes from 50 to 45. Anywhere, I've driven all the way down from Francisco Street, there is no warning as you approach East Natoma that your speed limit is changing from 50 to 45. There is a 45 mile an hour speed limit way over here on the sidewalk. That's the only means of notifying you that the speed has been reduced to 45. Interestingly enough, as you travel Blue Ravine, and I'm going to talk about going from Natoma to Prairie City, and then I'm going to turn around and talk to you about Prairie City to Natoma, and there's a reason for that. As I go, as I travel from, as I travel southwest, I'm traveling, there's all kinds of businesses on Blue Ravine. At that segment, from Natoma to Oak Avenue Parkway, there is a solid median that prevents a lot of crazy cross-traffic. It also prevents left turns in certain situations. There are several roads coming off of Blue Ravine all the way to Folsom Boulevard that are uncontrolled accesses. Several of those are uncontrolled accesses.
Just to clarify, none of them are uncontrolled. They all have stop signs on them.
All right. So, for example, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make, at Manso North Parkway, at South Parkway Jurgensen, at Oak Avenue Parkway, at the Folsom Middle School entrance, at--
There's a stop sign, there's a stop sign or a stoplight at every one of them.
Not, let me finish my point, please. At Big Val, what I'll call Big Valley Lower, there is a stop sign for Big Valley that prevents them from just barreling out onto Blue Ravine, but there is nothing that prevents them from making a left turn across two lanes of traffic onto the northeast side of Blue Ravine. That is an uncontrolled access point across those, the southwest lanes of traffic.
And you can call it uncontrolled, but there's a stop sign there?
Not at, not on Blue Ravine.
Go on.
It's not a four-way stop. Same is true at Crossing Way. There is nothing that helps the motorists on Crossing Way trying to get across the southwest lanes of traffic, left onto the northeast lanes of traffic. The segment of Blue Ravine, as I'm traveling southwest, that goes 40 miles per hour, is one block long. There's a sign way back at Flower, not Flower, excuse me, at School Street that says, "40 mile per hour ahead." I have driven it, I have walked it. There is no other sign that says 40 miles per hour until you cross East Bidwell and you hit about Wells Fargo. Then, there's a 40 mile an hour speed limit sign that lasts for one block. The second you get past Crossing Way, it resumes 45 all the way to Folsom Boulevard. However, if I travel northeast on Blue Ravine, Crossing doesn't get the same benefit of the 40 mile an hour zone going the other direction, because as I come up from Riley to East Bidwell, it's 40 miles an hour, starting at about Golden One, which means I've already passed Crossing. So, Crossing gets the benefit of 40 miles an hour going this way, but people are going 45 miles an hour past Crossing going this way. And then, there is no reduction or no increase in speed. It stays 40 miles an hour on that side of the road from Golden One all the way past Folsom Middle School, all the way up to just before Flower. Then, you've got a 45 mile an hour speed limit sign. Now, of course, when the little darlings are there, it reduces to 25. Why is it appropriate to drive 45 miles an hour past Folsom Middle School going southwest, and it's appropriate to drive 40 miles an hour past Folsom Middle School going northeast? There's an inconsistency there that should be addressed. And if there is any justification on Blue Ravine to reduce to 40 miles per hour in those segments, then I suggest that there is a reason to reduce to 40 miles per hour along the entire segment. If you are, after all that I've laid out before you, actually considering adopting the new Blue Ravine recommendations, how does that affect these 40 mile an hour sections already in place? Why is it okay to travel that section from Flower to Wells Fargo Bank at 45 miles an hour, but northeast from Golden One to Flower at 40? Why is the southwest 40 mile per hour section so small? Why doesn't the northeast section reduce to 40 miles per hour prior to Crossing? Why are there no 40 mile per hour section ahead signs on the northeast side? Is this decision permanent? When can it be next revisited, appealed? If adopted to remain at 45, can we at least address some of the issues I've raised? Can we reduce the speed earlier on the Green Valley section to 45, at whatever point we, SAC County, control that versus El Dorado Hills, Placer County? Can we utilize other additional calming measures available? More medians, signage, warning lights, traffic signal improvements, giving our engineers the ability to use the new traffic control center to slow traffic down when warranted? Restriping, how about striping southwest Blue Ravine now in the manner you intend to change it when the proposed bike lane changes might actually be installed? Are there ways we can communicate to our citizenry and the others who travel through and around it that slowing down saves lives? Just that five mile an hour speed reduction gives everyone, the motorist and anyone potentially in harm's way, those additional fractions of a second to respond. Response time does matter. Can we come up with some public service message campaigns? Can I respectfully request that the Folsom Police Department take a less cynical approach to speed limit enforcement? It would be my fervent hope that we enforce the speed limits in our city for the sake and safety of our citizens. Additionally, whether or not a citation will hold up in court seems like a crazy standard to employ at the time of possible issuance. As a citizen of the city, I would rather you err on the side of losing in court versus the side of not writing the ticket, of not delivering the slow-down message. I assure you, you can affect behavior. Enforcement will change behavior. Word of mouth will spread that you take our speed limits seriously and that you will issue citations to offenders without consideration of a threshold. I am not a citizen who sits idly by and complains. I stand before you, a citizen ready to roll up my sleeves to make Blue Ravine safer, other streets safer, and to promote a safer Folsom. Yes, I stand before you because I was touched by a tragedy. I would not even likely be aware of all of this apart from that. Shame on me. But it did happen, and I am aware, and I am here, and I am not going away. I beg you to do what you can to make improvements when you see so clearly that you have this opportunity to do so. If you fail to act, if you fail to seize this moment, it is only a matter of time before others will have to stand before you for the same reason that brought my attention to this matter.
Thank you, Joanne. We have no other requests to speak on this. Do we have any questions of staff?
I'll just mention, I spent the better part of Sunday and Monday actually driving all of these streets and intersections and kind of just-- all of these streets and intersections and kind of just evaluating the speeds on it because when I was researching kind of what this, how this developed, you know, the 85th percentile, as well as the speed and, you know, the speed of everyone else around me and how the unsafe conditions were safe conditions. And, you know, residents brought up some really good points. There are some things we can do for, and, you know, just mentioned to Mark, and I saw you jotting notes down, but, you know, greater signage for speed as well as the striping and marking. There are some of the intersections where I found that, you know, even though they're controlled in lights and with stop signs, they weren't, you know, and Elaine and I talked about this, kind of by economy and stuff like that, but there's some that could be, you know, more prominently shown so that, so that when you're getting ready to cross and the guy who doesn't see the red just blows through it, he actually might see the striping in general. But I think speed is an issue that we're, that we're facing in the city in general. But I, understanding the speed, I don't know, I just spent a good time about it, and I, I'm pretty, I feel confident with, and I say that because I know there are issues and everything can be improved, but when I was looking at through there, and I have small kids and we ride bikes as well, and there are, on these speed limits, the reductions going back, it seems like speed in general, folks are just kind of going through without even looking at the posted speed limit. So greater postage and with Folsom PD, maybe just greater response to the speeding element. So those are the kind of the comments I had, just, just looking through the agenda over the weekend.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, I do. Just a procedural question, maybe, from Mark or Steve. So this is the first reading, as Mike was asking earlier. So we are voting whether or not to adopt this tonight. That's kind of the first question. And the second one is, what if we didn't? What if we said, hey, let's send this back to the Traffic Safety Committee or whatever? How does that affect our ability to enforce the existing speed limit for the next few months?
Mark, if you don't mind, allow me to answer that before you jump in. Madam Mayor, and the Vice Mayor's question about tonight's action item is to introduce the proposed ordinance. It is not to adopt. That will come after the second reading. So this is the chance where you can evaluate the proposed speed limit and make any adjustment you believe is appropriate--
And if we do that, then it needs to come back for another first reading.
Correct. Subject to, right, subject to the engineer's study and the limitations established by those studies. And you can certainly, if the council wish, you can certainly postpone this and have another session with the traffic engineering, engineer, or another session with the Traffic Safety Committee. But basically, what Mark presented tonight does represent the left and the right limitation as to the kind of wiggle room you have to deal with the numbers verified by the traffic engineer. Mark?
The only thing I would disagree with is I don't see that there is any wiggle room based on the presentation of the data.
Yeah, and certainly, if there are any recommendations or comments from the council, this is a draft set of surveys. We can go back to Mr. Kinsel and, you know, certainly some of the information that Joanne shared. I can, I can discuss that with him in terms of better defining the boundaries of the speed zones that he's recommending. And then once we know what those boundaries are, you know, we can make the appropriate signage changes. If there are any sections that you are curious about, if there, you know, to use the term wiggle room, we can discuss that with, with Mr. Kinsel and find out if, if he, as the engineer of record on these documents, would be comfortable recommending those. And then, you know, your staff would also evaluate that, and then we'd send it back through the process through the Traffic Safety Committee again.
The only, the only additional comment I'm going to make, Mark, and again, this is me with the licensed civil engineer hat on. You can call those, those reports drafts if you want to redo them. Right now, they're not drafts, they're final reports. If you choose to redo them, then I guess they become drafts, but the data's not going to change. The data is what the data is, and the data indicates that the speed limits should remain as they are. Joanne brought up some good points. If there's confusion about what those speed limits need to be on Blue Ravine, then we need to make sure the signs are where they belong. But I think that's a relatively, relatively easy fix. If we're going to move forward and do lane, lane width reductions, that's great. Again, I'm not sure that it's going to change the speeds there, but I don't see this as being anything than what it is. The numbers are what the numbers are. Downgrading the speed limits are going to make enforcement of any of those tickets much more difficult than, than they already are. I don't know what threshold was talked about in the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, and I appreciate the previous speaker talking about the safety, but, you know, we need to post these based on, you know, the fact that the law believes that 85% of people are driving a reasonable speed. We can argue that one all day, but that's the way the law is written, and it's not just here, it's not just in Sacramento, it's not just in California, it's nationwide. And that's how these speed limits are established everywhere. So, you know, I see that in order for us not to have this same conversation again, not to have to pay the consultant to redo the speed survey, because I frankly don't believe it's going to change. I'm only happy that we're able to keep it at 45. I was really afraid that we were going to, that those numbers were going to come in over 50, and we were going to be stuck at 50, and I was going to be very unhappy about that. So, which is why, as, as you know, and as the police department knows, I make that request every time we're doing a speed survey. Please have the police department out there in advance so that people are at least a little bit afraid in advance of when the equipment gets placed. So I'm not, you know, I don't see the wiggle room, and I don't see the point in delaying this and going over this again.
So, so let me ask a question. I don't want to jeopardize our ability to enforce the speed limit, whether it's 40 or 45. So is there, is there one that's better than the other? If we were to say, hey, let's, let's take another second look at this, there was an accident, you know, a fatality since this, whatever, if we, if we say, take another look and possibly bring it back, or adopt it with the understanding that in the next few months, six months, let's say, this will be looked at again and could possibly be adjusted. Is there one of those that is preferable over the other in terms of being able to enforce the speed limit?
I, I think it would be the, the second scenario, you know, to go ahead and adopt what's before you today, and then every time we make changes to the roads. So the, the striping plan on Blue Ravine Road, the widening of Green Valley, any opportunity that, well, Empire Ranch Road, we're about to signalize that with six new signals. We'll be out resur surveying that after the signals are in. So anytime we make these changes, we will do another survey, we will come back to you with fresh results. But for the time being, we're recommending, let's adopt something so that we can continue to have enforceable speed limits.
Is there any time threshold where we can revisit this? Do you have to wait for any particular period of time? Or if new conditions exist, can we come right back to it in six weeks?
I, I think once a condition changes, I would advise that we give the traffic a short period of time to acclimate to the new situation, but then--
And none of these changes are going to happen within the next six weeks?
No, I realize that. So, so if I can just comment and then perhaps make a motion, the, I happened to, on your map that you showed of the different locations where they did the testing, the number 12 is on my house. And I drive to the number 14 or whatever the other end of Blue Ravine is every single day. I happen to work in the office park at one end and live at the other end by Rayleigh's. And I'm intimately familiar with some of the sort of complicated turning movements that exist along that road. And I'm particularly sensitive to the way that people use Blue Ravine in the little zone between East Natoma and the, the North Parkway Manso entrance. There's a complicated left turn, pair of left turns you have to make in order to go from Rayleigh's back into the Parkway. And I have lots of neighbors that live in there, and we all do that. And what ends up happening is the people that come off of Green Valley that happen to make the light oftentimes don't realize that you have to go across two lanes to make that left, and they come up on the left side, you get honked at, there's all kinds of problems right in there. So that's just one example of sort of the issues with Blue Ravine. The other piece to it is I had kids that went to Folsom Middle School and, who biked to school, and in, in, and they were there in two different little timeframes, and in both instances, they had firsthand experience with their having been a kid bike accident at Flower. So there's a need to do something to make a safer path to school, absolutely along Blue Ravine, and I have suggested that and recommended it before. So what I would suggest is, I, I agree with the mayor that the data is the data, the law is the law, the way of looking at this, while it may seem flawed on the surface, is the way that everyone looks at it. And delaying this adoption right now, I don't think is, gives us any particular meaningful change to things. However, what I would like to see is that, well, the, the thing that the Traffic Safety Committee had in their, in their notes was about taking a look at safety overall along Blue Ravine and making sure that, I would like to have them be specific in having an assignment to send back to us from the staff and the committee, recommendations on specifically making Blue Ravine as an example for, for future improvements throughout the city of safer bike and pedestrian pathways. Reevaluate each and every one of the pedestrian crosswalks because some of them may be inappropriate or not timed correctly. Crazy as this may seem, given some discussions we've had in the past, I think the level of service at the Manso North Parkway intersection might need to be actually downgraded on purpose to gum up the works a little bit so that people don't come blasting off of Green Valley until it gets, gets widened up. So there's a whole series of things, but I recognize that speed is one of the levers where we can control the safety on Blue Ravine. I'd like to make sure that we identify what all the other ones are. Obviously, enforcement is one of them, obviously signage is one of them, obviously clear signage is one of them, and then how it is that we use the signalization along there. So with that all being said, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance or, you know, make, adopt the first reading of it with the caveat that the Traffic Safety Committee do look at safe pathways along Blue Ravine and bring us back some recommendations within the next four or five months.
May I would say before the second reading, right?
Well, the second reading's going to be at our next meeting as it's scheduled right now, so that's not, there's probably not enough time to do an adequate analysis of it.
And we, and we don't do first reading and wait six months and do the second reading?
Right.
It's--
Right, right, right.
This meeting and the next meeting.
Yeah. So I don't know if that actually, if I need to separate that into two separate things. I think the staff gets the gist of my, my ask here. But in terms of this particular motion, I'll move that we approve it, adopt it now, understanding that we are going to look at other ways to make Blue Ravine safer and try and take that 15 percentile people, person, and move them into the mainstream.
So what would it look like if we, if we, because I agree with everything you just said, except for, the only thing is, I would like to see that, that case study put forth first before the first reading adoption.
I don't, I don't know what case study you're talking about.
Well, not case study, but in, you know, looking through Blue Ravine--
Those recommendations.
--and finding out where we can, where we can make better improvements on there and, and start that path prior. But I don't know, like, I think the data is the data. Like you said, if we go back to the consultant and spend money on that, it's not going to change. It's going to be the same 85th percentile. So I do agree with that, but I would like to see that, the improvements come back and, you know, and providing some more safe and secure pathways for folks too--
But I think that's what the proposal has been, that they will go back to traffic safety--
Yeah.
--get some recommendations, determine what those changes may or may not be, then we, we determine what we have budget-wise and in what timeframe we can, we can put those into practice. And then, once the changes have been made, we can redo the speed survey, but we could be looking at some of those things. It could be a year away. So the question is, do we have a second for--
I will second the motion.
Okay. So I think, Mark, you've been given a significant amount of direction on this.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord--
No.
Koslowski--
Yes.
Sheldon--
Yes.
Aquino--
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. So we will then take item 10B in advance of item 9A.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Dave Newt--
We're doing this because we've got some consultants in the room, we'd like to be able to send them home.
Your Public Works Director. Thank you for taking this item out of order on your agenda. The item before you tonight is requesting authorization to amend and restate our agreement with our current vendor, Cal Waste Recovery Systems, or Cal Waste as we refer to them, for residential single-stream recycling service. The challenges with recycling due to the restrictions imposed by China, commonly known as the China National Sword, have forced recyclers throughout California and the entire nation to slow their processing lines as well as increase staffing to manually, excuse me, sort the materials in order to meet the very stringent requirements imposed by China. This has resulted in increased costs and coupled with the overall decreasing revenue of recycled commodities, recyclers have been forced to either terminate their contracts or renegotiate those contracts. Staff considered soliciting a new request for proposals to seek a new vendor. However, Sacramento County, who is a much larger generator of recycled materials than Folsom is, recently conducted an RFP and only received two solicitations. They only received two proposals. One of them was Cal Waste, and they chose Cal Waste based on their proposal. And again, Cal Waste is our current recycler. If you have any questions in the staff, of the staff report, I have Mark Rappaport, our in-house residential guru for recycling, as well as a representative from Cal Waste to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions?
I just have one question. The agreement with Cal Waste, does it have an expected tonnage or minimum tonnage incorporated into it?
It does. Currently, the, the contract that we've negotiated with them is in a draft form, but most of the, the points are there. Let me pull up exactly, I believe it's 5,000 tons, if I can find that.
Are we certain to exceed that minimum?
We're, we're fairly confident that we will meet their, their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Dave, the only request I would make is that we do whatever we can by way of utility bills, the, the website and the newsletter, to let people be aware of this issue. It's an ongoing issue. You know, years ago, City of Folsom was one of the first communities in the state to hit the, the recycling--
Minimum.
--minimum.
Mm-hmm.
And for a long time, we were making significant amount of profit on the recycling, and that market has basically fallen apart. But if we could let the residents know what they need to do to those things that they want to continue to put in, into the recycling so that we can minimize the amount of, of loss that the city's taking on those, if it's washing out containers or whatever it is we need to do, if we could make people aware of that so that they can continue to put those things in the recycling instead of--
We're, we're on the brink of a major educational outreach to address that very issue.
Okay.
And, and as well, I can even state, some of the clauses in our contract address that very issue, that we have already a very clean recycling stream that's going to our vendor, and those, those are accommodated by premiums, if you want to call it that, but we will receive a better revenue source for, for our recycling stream. But the more we get it clean, the more we can get and reduce our expense.
I'll motion to move 10256.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord--
Yes.
Koslowski--
Yes.
Sheldon--
Yes.
Aquino--
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. And with that, we will move back to item 9A, Old Business. That's Resolution 10253, Resolution of the City Council approving establishment of the Historic District Parking Solutions Ad Hoc Committee. You're up again.
I haven't moved again, so I'm, I'm here on this one as well. So as you stated, the, the resolution before you tonight is to establish the Historic District Parking Solutions Ad Hoc Committee. At your October 23rd meeting last year, you held a public workshop relating to the parking concerns in the residential portions of the Historic District and heard from many residents and many business owners sharing their viewpoints on the issue. At that meeting, you directed staff to bring an action item back, to appoint an ad hoc committee, and to work with stakeholders on possible solutions of this parking issue, or the parking issues, there's not just one. The proposed ad hoc committee before you tonight will be tasked with meeting with residents, business owners, other stakeholders to discuss the parking constraints and challenges affecting residents in the Historic District, to explore possible solutions to alleviate parking concerns in the residential portions of the parking, or in the Historic District, and to make a final report and recommendation to the City Council no later than 12 months from the first committee meeting. The committee is proposed to be established for a period not to exceed one year from the date of this resolution. Each member of the committee shall vote--
Dave, I just want to clarify that. My understanding is that ad hoc committees based on the charter are intended to last six months but can go with extension-- on the charter are intended to last six months but can go with extensions of that six months up to no more than one year.
I believe the charter states up to one year.
Okay. Ideally, I'd frankly like to see the, this ad hoc committee move at a little bit faster pace and come back with some recommendations sooner rather than later.
And I think we will, we will obviously discuss that as one of the missions to bring this back quickly.
Okay.
Each, each member of the committee shall have one vote and the decisions of the committee shall be made by a majority vote. Committee members at the first meeting shall choose the chair and vice chair. The committee shall meet monthly for two hours or more often as agreed to by the committee. The meetings will be open to the public with meeting notification widely disseminated throughout, disseminated throughout the city in advance in order to encourage maximum public participation. The meetings are to be professionally facilitated and that facilitator will be paid for by the city. City staff will report back to the council monthly via written memorandum unless otherwise directed by the committee chair. The committee will report, will submit a report, as I stated, no later than 12 months from the first committee meeting. And the city manager may, most likely will, assign staff to provide administrative support and subject matter experts to the committee. And I will also state.
Oh, I can, I can assure you that the city manager will in fact do just that.
Correct.
We can hope. So now onto the, the, the composition of the proposed ad hoc committee. The proposal before you tonight would have a nine-member committee and that would be made up of two Folsom Historic District Association members, or FHDA members, two Folsom Historic District Residents Association, or HDRA members, one Historic District Business Owner not affiliated with FHDA or HDRA or the Chamber of Commerce, one Historic District Resident not affiliated with FHDA, HDRA, or the Chamber of Commerce. I think I just repeated that, didn't I? Oh, no, business, see, I can't read it. One's business, one's a resident. One Folsom resident who lives outside the Historic District, one Folsom Business Owner who owns, or whose business is outside the Historic District, and one professional planner or licensed engineer who's a Folsom resident and has professional expertise working on transportation-related projects. So that is the formation and I believe the city manager would like to make some additional comments.
I just wanted to add that we also suggest that no member of the ad hoc committee be a Folsom elected or appointed official to preserve the right of this body to act on future recommendations.
Thank you.
And I also want to, as we had quite a discussion, on A and B, I want to add one to those numbers that makes the total of the committee nine. There was a lot of give and take in that meeting, but I'm, I'm back on, on that. I'm, I'm very happy with the mayor putting an ad hoc committee together.
Ernie, do you mean to suggest that you want A and B to have three people instead of two?
That's correct.
Okay, because you, you said you wanted to add one and make it nine, it's already nine.
It'll make it to 11.
Be a total of 11.
Total of 11.
Okay, but you didn't say that, you said nine. I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
11 is my hearing, maybe I'm wrong. No, I want to add A and B, add it to three because the representation has to be, there's the two primaries right there.
So just to be clear, so you, you're proposing three Folsom Historic District Association members.
Correct.
And three Folsom Historic District Residents Association members.
Correct.
Okay, for a total committee of 11 members.
Correct.
Okay.
If I can make a quick change also, or propose a change on E and F, I think that should actually reflect not part of the Folsom Chamber of Commerce as well.
It does.
No, the E and F does not.
No, I'm, no, E and F does not and, and I'm, that's, I have no problem with, with adding two people up above in A and B, but excluding, excluding people from the, because they happen to be chamber members, I think is, is completely unnecessary.
I'm not excluding because they're chamber, I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole point of not having that, that, the mentality right there of bigger, more event, stuff like that, so I think it would be a better opinion from a business owner outside of the Historic District that isn't involved with the chamber.
I, I don't, I don't see that the chamber has anything to do with this, the 90% of the events that take place in the Historic District have nothing to do with the chamber, they have to do.
Why are we acknowledging it up here then?
They have to do with the Historic District Association.
Mm-hmm.
That's who sponsors most of the events down there.
Hmm.
And they have three representatives, as, as Ernie has recommended, so I'm not willing to exclude chamber members in, in E or F.
They are excluded in C and D.
Right, right.
But.
I don't understand why it makes it, oh, sorry, go ahead.
But they're not necessarily excluded in A and B, right? I mean, somebody could potentially be a member of the FHDA and a Folsom Chamber of Commerce member.
They're not necessarily excluded in A and B.
Okay.
They know who they're representing, they couldn't care less. Okay, he did not represent the chamber in the, if they're in those two, okay, that's the way I look at it.
That's the intent.
And I have nothing against the chamber, it's not, it's not an attack on that, I just want an everyday person to be part of that resident category that isn't familiar or involved in some sort of aspect with those, with something going on with the Chamber of Commerce, that's it, that's, I, I think that would be a good person to have, at least one of those, to not be affiliated, an ambassador or some sort of board member or something like that, I just don't, I don't know why it would make a difference.
Well, how are we defining affiliated? Can somebody not just be a member of the Chamber of Commerce and still serve on, on these? How are you defining?
We're defining affiliated as just member.
As a member.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I, I frankly don't think it's necessary to exclude them from C and D, but I'm not willing to exclude them from four, from four categories, so.
One other question, Elaine, I just want to clarify what you said earlier, so, so nobody from the City Council will sit on this, but nobody from a, who's currently a commissioner will sit on this?
A Folsom, Folsom committee or commissioner, committee member or commissioner.
Okay.
So no UAC, no planning, no HDC, no Parks and Rec, no.
Traffic Safety.
Traffic Safety.
Got it, okay.
No utility advisory.
Correct.
And, and when.
Arts Commission, Library Commission.
Yeah, okay. When the committee comes up with its recommendations, are those recommendations going to go to the HDC before they come to the City Council?
No, they will be, no, they'll come to the City Council.
Okay.
And just to kind of get all information out right now as you're considering this item, I do want to add that we had prepared a short list of the pieces of information that would be provided to this ad hoc committee as they get started with their work. The first would be the number of Historic District employees working each hour of the day, and we would hope to work with the FHDA on gathering that information. 12-month event calendar for the Historic District, both the last 12 months and the future 12 months, and the source of that would be FHDA and also the city. Historic District Streets Traffic Counts, provided by the City of Folsom, and a map featuring a count of available parking spaces provided by the city, and of course, any other information the committee members might request, but that would get them started.
I just don't want that to be, we're going to give them any information that they ask for that we have the ability to get access to.
Exactly.
Okay.
Can I make a statement?
Yes, you can, but we do have two requests to speak to.
What?
Yep, two, I'm going to open the public hearing, so. Okay, we have two requests to speak, first is Paul Keast and the second is Martha Lofgren.
I've lived in, on Mormon Street now for about a year and a half, so I guess in relative terms, I'm fairly new and a rookie to this, to this topic. The one thing that I have come to know is that it's been around a long time, so I really do appreciate the council's offering to do the, the event that happened back in October, we couldn't attend that because we were on a trip. But that was pretty, when I saw that the first time, I was amazed that that, that came up, so, you know, that's a credit to you folks to, to be able to see that that, that happened. And, and that, you know, it's happening now, again, as I understand, it hasn't, it hasn't happened in the past and this, this issue's been around a long time. The, and so, you know, I really feel that this is a unique district, that's, we came from Lexington Hills and so we moved to the Historic District specifically for, you know, a combination of the, of the events and the, and the culture that's there, so we, we, we like it there and we want to understand how we can work together as partners with the people that are in our district and merchants and the people that are coming to the district to be able to make it something that's going to be workable and livable for everybody, you know, in terms of the, the lifestyle that we want to live and in terms of the, the people that are working there and, and operating their businesses, so. So thank you very much for, for this effort and I'm hoping we're able to see something good come out of it.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Loretta Hattinger, is that, your request to speak didn't say what item it is, for this one?
Right.
Okay, all right, next speaker is Martha Lofgren, then Dino Trotta, then Loretta.
Thank you, Mayor Howell, and members of the City Council. I actually had not planned to come and speak on this, I was reading it on my phone as I was sitting in the audience, and my question was going to be, why exclude a resident of the Historic District who is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce but not a member of the other two organizations? Because that would be me. I live in the Historic District, I'm a member of the Chamber, I'm not a member of the two other associations identified. I have raised with the city on three occasions issues related to road closures, not parking on programs that are not affiliated with the Folsom Chamber, so I was trying to understand why there would be a blanket prohibition against a resident of the Historic District who was also simply a member of the Chamber. It surprises me to see that be a penalty for someone for, you know, supporting the business community, being a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and it's disappointing to me frankly to see the city isolate people based on their voluntary association with different organizations, whether it be the Chamber of Commerce or anyone else.
Thanks, Martha. Next is Dino Trotta.
I'm glad I could speak tonight. I've just went over a nice flu cold and I won't contaminate you. A couple of issues, how are you going to have this group follow guidelines? Do you have anything in place for them to use? Are they going to follow the historical?
I think the short answer would be Robert's Rules of Order.
Right. Well, no, that's not where I was going from. If we're to help assist in giving directions, I, I understand that, but I meant from the city, are we to follow the historical rules, guidelines for the Historical District?
They're going to be talking about parking, there is no guidelines for parking in the Historic District.
Well, what if we come, pull, come across an issue that is an issue that deals with that?
If you're trying to drag this into the issue of granny flats, that's not.
No.
Okay, so this is going to be about parking and traffic in the Historic District.
And, and we will have staff at the meetings to assist in the directions for any questions you may have, whether it, you know, infringes on a current policy or along those sites, so we'll have community development, we'll have Parks, Public Works, we could have Parks and Rec, we have a number of city staff available for the committee.
Oh, that'll be good. Why is the HPL not involved? Historical preservation rate.
Because that was not part of the consideration and Loretta may or may not have something to say about HPL's opinion, I know she's a long-term member and long-term president of that organization, but, but I, it's about parking, Dino.
I, I understand that.
We're not, we're not trying to rebuild or redefine the Historic District, it's just about the parking issues.
Not yet.
And there's a couple of different categories that, there's a couple of different categories of membership that would allow HPL to have a voice, potentially.
All right.
As long as they're not chamber members, I guess, but, sorry.
Well, thank you, I just, I just wanted to bring those.
Okay, thanks, Dino.
All right.
Loretta, you're next.
I'm going to propose a little more challenge, I want to get a different subject in this because it's got to tie right together. First, I wanted to say I am so grateful to the city for tackling this issue head-on. This is something that was, was a beginning issue, maybe a little more than beginning, when I retired 20 years ago, so I'm so glad that we're getting to this. And my question for you is what the process is going to be for filling these slots, are you going to ask these organizations to give you their representatives? Are you going to have an application process? Is it going to be something that individual City Council members want to figure out? I'm just curious how this is going to proceed.
There's, there's going to be an application process.
Okay.
And do we know, do you know when those applications are going to be ready?
We can have them ready very quickly and we envision a ballot process similar to what we did for picking the commissioners this time around, that the city, the ballot, the City Council would have a ballot and the applications attached and they make their decision here on the dais.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Loretta. Okay, we have no other requests to speak on this, any other questions of staff, any discussion?
I'm going to, I'm going to, go ahead, you.
Well, I, I just have, I have a comment. When I first looked at this, I thought it was a little bit too restrictive also, I mean, Ernie, when you talked about increasing A and B by one each, couldn't we just have a category that says, you're a resident? I mean, we don't care what you belong to or what you don't belong to, you're just a resident of the Historic District, in one way you're just a, a business owner.
Well, the reason you don't is there are not, not everybody in the Historic District is a member of the association and they could have a different view. You could be happy as, you know, pig in this, in the, in the farm, okay? And the other guy could be living on Figaro Street and eating the, the noise and all the traffic, day after day and weekend after weekend, it's two different categories there. So what we did is try to.
That's only, the only way I see that as being two different categories is somebody's happy and somebody's not.
Well, and the guy.
Unless I'm missing something.
Well, the person is happy, thank God. The person is not happy, that's our responsibility to make them happy and to fix the problem that's been going on, as the Reddit says, 20 years. I can speak to 10, 10 in a few months, because my first month on, on the City Council, I had this problem thrown right at me. I attempted to get something done with the hierarchy at that time on this council and I got zero. Okay, zero. I, I commend Kerry for taking this action to get us started. And there's no reason we can't finish this, it hasn't been done for 30 years. I go back 33 years to this city and although I had other obligations, I didn't pay attention to O-Town, other than I went down there a lot, okay, took my families there, they came in to see the good place. But when I got on this council, I was asked to look at the problem, I was astounded of what the residents were putting up with. And so, we have two categories, that's, that's my answer.
Which two categories?
You have the, a member of the, three members of the association, and now likewise, I think it's three members of the, of the Merchants Association, now they may be members of the, of the Chamber, I don't know. If I, my, in, in my mind, the Chamber on, in Center Street is a tenant, they're not an authority. The authority is the business association and all the residents that make up that place, that's, that's, that's the power. Okay, we wouldn't know that if you listen to people. You think the Chamber is doing everything around doing it, that's not the case, they, they're, they're fine in the role that they have, they're a tenant, okay? And so, the, the Merchant Association is running the show, I can tell you that because the more I find, the more I find out how they are running the show. Okay, so we want them to have equal harmony. What we're trying to do with this ad hoc committee, as I see it, we're trying to balance out that the neighbors that are not having a comfortable quality of life get one and the business that are wanting to make a money and be prosperous, they are, we, we're not trying to kill the business, okay? If all that byproduct helps the Chamber, fine and dandy, I have no problem with that. But the main concern is to get some focus with this committee and with the city supporting it 100%, we're going to put money in to help them do it, then I think we should solve the problem after 30 years and 10 of mine and 20 of the Reddits, it's time to action. You know, the last time I asked somebody to help me, I got a four-letter telephone remark back, okay, they told me I had no business even asking the question. I'm still here and I'm still asking the question, I have two years to go and I want it solved before I go.
Okay, so we're trying to get to that, Ernie, because I, that phone conversation, whatever you're talking about.
I think it's.
Was most certainly not with me.
Nope, what's not?
I am happy to go to three people in category A, three people in category B, and I just want to delete any mention of the Chamber of Commerce.
Can I just?
I'm, I'm going to finish my comments first. I agree with Sarah, I don't, I don't see what the Chamber of Commerce really has anything to do with this, and the only thing I'm going to disagree with you on is that the Chamber is a tenant in a building down there, just like almost every other business is a tenant in a business down there, and the Chamber is one of the large. And the chamber is one of the larger employers, based on their number of employees. Certainly smaller than Powerhouse and maybe smaller than some of the larger restaurants, but they're a big employer and they're a tenant like almost everybody else, because most of those buildings are owned by someone other than the owner of the building.
Well, I'm not necessarily worried about the owner of the building, I'm worried about the tenant in the building that's trying to make a living, running a business. That's the one I'm more concerned about. Not necessarily concerned about, now, if the owner is also the business owner, that's fine. But I'm worried about the tenants and I'm worried about the residents that live in this town and put up this and stuff. I think we can do it, as long as we go into this ad hoc committee.
Okay, Ernie, all I want to do is delete the two references in items C and D to the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to eliminate that.
So, this is what I was going to interject, it's not about the chamber, it's about a specific opinion or ideology that's not based upon the Chamber of Commerce in general. We need an outside independent perspective on this, and that's why I'm saying it's not a prohibition on the Chamber of Commerce, it's a prohibition on the same thought and mentality that's been exacerbating this problem for 20 years. This is the same can being kicked down the road because we don't pull other people and different people that aren't involved now and pull them into the equation. So, mentioning the Chamber of Commerce isn't a prohibition, it's just, it's basically reaching out beyond just the Chamber of Commerce.
Roger, none of these people are board members or necessarily affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce. There are FHDA members that may or may not be part of the chamber, historic district resident association that probably are not part of the chamber, and a business owner not affiliated with either one of the previous two categories, a resident that's not a member of FHDA or HDRA, and then a resident outside the district, a business owner outside the district, and a planner or PE. I don't see why there's any mention of the chamber here at all.
To be protected. I ran for six years for this seat and every single debate, every single Old Town thing, Ernie hit it, it's always the same thing, parking, parking, parking. And it never gets done. And I made a commitment and a promise to make sure...
Right, well, I get that everybody's complaining about this, but we're trying to do it now. So, we can keep talking about complaining about how it took one to get to this.
It's not a one-way street. So, my point is, I'm uncomfortable removing any reference. It needs to be there. It needs to be there so that it's independent outside perspective. So, that's just my point on it.
Is the recommendation as it stands right now from Ernie to increase the total number of membership to 11?
Yes.
Nine of them are able to be chamber members theoretically, the way this is written currently, and two are prohibited from being chamber members.
Well, I don't want two, I want three.
So...
Right, but you also have to be...
I think it's a fair compromise in light of Roger's comments to allow the prohibition to go forward against those two particular members not also having membership in the chamber, because there could theoretically be nine chamber members otherwise on the committee.
Well, let me say why I talk about the chamber, because when I started doing the survey and trying to get some of the data, everybody's telling me all the impact on the scheduling that brings all the people down there, the business association's doing it, it's not the chamber. Chamber has maybe one, two, maybe three events that they do, and all they are is a special event requested. They're no different than anybody else. But the driving force and the one that we have to partnership completely is the merchant association. They're the ones doing the action. That's why, there's no reason for a chamber member, okay, to be on there, but they may be part of the...
Nobody's designating a position as a chamber member.
No.
I don't think we should exclude anybody who happens to be a chamber member. No one's, there's no requirement that it be a chamber member. But because somebody has chosen to be a chamber member, and there's, I don't know, 800 members of the Folsom Chamber, I don't think people that happen to have a chamber membership should be excluded.
Well, I'm going to be optimistic in the people that go on the committee, the final cut, they represent what the category says. If they're a member of the association, the business association, they represent the business that are making the money on Center Street. They're not necessarily representing the chamber. Chamber has all over the town.
I don't think anybody's going to go on there trying to represent the chamber. I think they're going to represent the residents or their business or whatever.
Well, then, if we can ensure that, then, fine. Now, if somebody gets in, that's different, then we'll take care of that.
So, I want to be clear that I'm not just specifically objecting to the chamber reference. I don't understand why we're saying you have to be a member of the historic district association, you have to be, why wouldn't we just say we want to have four residents who live in the historic district, four business owners who are in the historic district, and then E, F, and G?
The only answer I can give you, you don't understand the problem. Okay? That's the only answer I can give you when you make that configuration. I come up, you know, I made a couple sayings that I live with now. If you want to participate, you show up, you stand up, you speak up. I've come up with a new one with this particular project. If you walk the walk, you get to talk. Okay? And I made a compromise with letting outside the people be representative. I understand it, and the mayor convinced me, I accept it. But that's why I'm saying, why you got to specifically zero in. You can have four members in another living on the far side with a big granny flat and all this kind of stuff, they're happy as anything. Good. There's no problem. I don't want to make them unhappy. But the ones that are closer to the problem, they should be the ones represented to fix the problem. That's why we have it.
So, if you live in the, so maybe I don't understand this. If you live in the Folsom Historic District Residents Association, is that a subset of the historic district?
No, it's an organization that they're reforming.
Right.
It's a relatively new organization. It existed before, it kind of went away, and it's being reformulated. The merchants association, the FHDA has existed, you know, almost forever. It changed its name once, but it's been around for a long time.
Okay, so then, Ernie, I'm just not understanding you, because I agree that there should be residents from the historic district on the committee. I have no problem with that, I agree wholeheartedly. I'm just saying, why do we have to say they have to be a member of this or they can't be a member of that? Why can't we just say four residents?
I think if I can interject, it's a subject matter expert. There's folks who are knowledgeable of certain pieces of those who define the FHDA and the HDRA. So, just picking four individual people who happen to just live there wouldn't be appropriate as far as the input and dialogue that needs to be on there.
Well, but the council's going to make the decision, so it's, you know, the five of us that are going to determine, based on the applications, who's going to get selected.
I see this thing watered down, it's like getting watered down further and further and further, and I think the way it was, and going back to the first conversation, you know, with the prior council, the way it was put on there is we picked specific folks from specific realms in the specific region this is impacting. So, that's why, my only statement with regards to the Chamber of Commerce is that it's easy to have one mindset based upon a commission that should be flourishing with different ideas so that we can actually look at this from an outside perspective. So, that's why they have the individuals picked on here. And I actually agree with increasing that from two to three, just to get that more of a broader spectrum on what the deals are down there.
Okay, first of all, we didn't have this discussion before because this is the first time in many, many years that we've actually talked about having an ad hoc committee on this subject. So, not sure what you're referring to. Because we didn't have...
We talked about it last year.
You may have had a discussion, you and Ernie may have had, but there was never a discussion of this council about forming this committee.
No, not the committee.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
The ad hoc committee was supposed to come back to the council from last year's council meeting.
That never happened, so we never got into this discussion about what the makeup was going to be.
No.
So, I have no problem personally in supporting three from FHDA, three from HDRA, given that we also don't know necessarily what the expertise is going to be, because that, the historic district residents association is basically being recast. And one of the earlier speakers is, you know, is relatively active in that group. Two of the other people that are going to be active in that group, Mike and Shannon sitting in the back of the room, were not involved in the previous versions of the historic district residents association. So, I feel satisfied that there's, you know, a little bit of change in perspective, probably in both of those organizations. And I also feel confident that this council will make the decisions, given the background and experience of the individuals that apply, and that they will work diligently on this committee. I have no doubt on that. But I do have an issue with excluding people that are in the chamber. So, I'm happy to go with three and three.
Let me just reinforce your, the people you mentioned, because exactly what my motto says, "You walk, you talk." They are walking, they are living the problem, okay? The two you mentioned are living the problem.
Right, and they have stepped up in wanting to reformulate the residents association. I'm very pleased that they were willing to do that.
Right.
So, I'm happy with the three and three on A and B. If we eliminate the prohibition of the chamber on C and D, and the rest of it, I can live with.
I'll be optimistic, but if the big, you know, the big elephant in the room starts throwing its weight around, I'm going to throw my weight around right back. So, I say, fine.
And I'm going to be right there with you, because that, do we have a motion or do we have another comment?
No, I'm done.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the ad hoc committee as with the modifications of A and B.
So, it's A and B on three?
And deleting the motion chamber.
Delete the chamber on C and D and everything else stays the same?
Yes.
For a total of 11 people? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Any more comments? Can we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Okay. And with that, we are going to take five minutes before we start on item 10A.
Nice to see everyone getting along so well, but if I get the council members back up here. Those of you that are planning on staying, please take a seat. Okay, we're going to reconvene, and our next item is 10A under new business. And this relates to potential for direct election of the mayor. And Councilmember Gaylord, you are up.
Thank you. So, I don't want to kill everybody with death by PowerPoint, but I kind of went through a couple of the older slides that we, that staff put together for some of the, where we are today versus where I'd like to take this and ultimately put this in the council's hands. So, if I can get this to work correctly. So, today, current Folsom City Council, five members at city council, every council member elected at large citywide, represents all citizens throughout the city. Mayor is one of the council members. Vice mayor serves as mayor in mayor's absence. Current role of the mayor, I feel it is more of a passive representation because it's picked from within the city council. 2.4 of the city charter basically states that the official representation of the city controls council agenda, presides and manages all council meetings, ceremonial roles, represents city and intergovernmental relationships. Current mayor selection, per the 2.3, 2.5 of the charter, mayor and vice mayor selected by council, serve at the pleasure of the council, selection process was adopted in 1990. Current selection process, city council elects mayor, vice mayor from his membership, majority vote of five council member annually, and it switches first regular meeting of Selection process in California, there's a few different ones. Obviously, council appointment, direct election, rotation, seniority, number of votes, vice mayor automatically elevated to mayor, and then a combination of some of those altogether in some places like Lincoln. Last year, we, or I pitched the idea of a rotation, basically rotated mayor with seniority and then backfilling it in the highest vote getter, and that failed with the council. So, with the ultimate goal was to go to direct election, but I didn't feel that there was any consensus for that. I included a couple of local practices right now. Sacramento mayor is at large, directed by, or directly elected by voters, four-year term. Eight council members voted by separate districts, district elections for a four-year term. Each council member represents only citizens in their district. Elk Grove, same thing, as far as the mayor is elected at large citywide. And they are, remaining four council members are elected at large citywide, four-year terms. Council members represent all cities, all citizens citywide, but must reside within the council district. So, it's a little different. Rancho mayor is selected amongst the council members. Each council member is elected at large citywide. Mayor and vice mayor rotate annually in December based on their seats at the dais. Mayor sits to the far left, then the vice mayor, and the end of the, each term, the council members shift one seat left. So, it's a little bit of a rotation on there. If there was to be a proposed direct elected mayor, requires a charter amendment which requires council vote. Submit ballot measure to the voters November 2020. Power deciding the rules and powers of the mayor. And then there is a second option with a citizens initiative, which would be, you have the ability to put the mayor measure on a March 2020 ballot for, if approved, you'd have your actual first vote for mayor in November 2020. That would require, I think it's, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's 10% of the, 15% of the registered voters from the last general election, right? Or governor's election?
[inaudible].
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I'm not sure if your mic's on.
The light seems to be red.
No, now it's on, I don't think it was a minute ago.
Okay, allow me to repeat. So, the information is 15% of all registered voters in the city of Folsom.
Considerations for a ballot measure if there was to be one. So, the election of the mayor at large citywide, whether to elect remaining four council members at large or through districts. Drawing district boundaries must be balanced in population and demographics and unique, as well as unique areas of Folsom. For me, a citizens advisory committee to draw the district boundaries is a must. Whether to revise duties and functions of the mayor and vice mayor, whether to provide mayor with veto power, strong mayor, question mark. Other considerations council wishes to present, and to my colleagues, if you have any questions on any of these, feel free to interrupt. I included a little public outreach. I've kind of been harping on this for a while, so I just, basically, there's two things. There's impression level and there's engagement. Impression is who sees it. Engagement is who acts on it. So, whether that's a like, a share, a comment, a post, something like that. So, analytics are important when you're trying to find out where you're getting it. Organic outreach for the page, just comparing them to some other council pages as well as the city pages, also broke down by demographic. So, it's not just a few people chatting in a forum, it's thousands of people in Folsom seeing and actively engaged on it. I posted some of these, just simple polls, where basically, you know, just polling folks to see if they are interested in the idea. I have several of these, I've only included a few, but the poll results are organic, they're public, and they come back usually pretty positive, as was for the term limits, the same method of outreach. Included another one that was on there, as well as the engagement and demographics from the returns on the poll. So, it's not, it's not just a few people who would like to see this and have the ultimate decision for their mayor. It's actually quite a big group of population in Folsom. Same thing, another poll, one of many polls taken. Request to council, I'm requesting that we motion to approve a measure, giving Folsom voters a choice to vote for direct-elect mayor. Motion to direct staff to draft options for mayoral roles for consideration of the direct-elect mayor. Options and impacts, veto powers, term of mayor, vice mayor, strong mayor, et cetera. And with the ultimate goal and conclusions is I'm able to provide metrics to indicate voters' desire a choice. Speculative costs get flown around and they're actually not proper for a sound judgment. There's, and Steve, we talked about this a little bit, but simply putting this on a November ballot is a very minuscule cost outside of the measure cost itself, correct?
It's the normal cost, normal election cost for a state general election.
And so, a change in the mayor, if it was a voted mayor with the same current government structure, wouldn't change anything financially for the city?
Not significantly, no.
Thank you. Council is elected to represent the voters at large, so the council has the power to allow feedback, or, sorry, feedback on the 2020 ballots of yes or no. Elected mayor will provide true accountability, change in the mayoral role from the passive participant to an active leader chosen by the voters of Folsom. And with that, I believe that is it.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Actually, let me start with the city attorney, just to clarify something that you had up there. You talked about the charter mentioning the way the agenda is set. Mr. Wong, my understanding is that there's nothing in the charter about the agenda, that's a city ordinance, a municipal code.
That is correct, Madam Vice Mayor. It's in Folsom municipal code, not in the city charter itself.
So, if we wanted to change the process by which the agenda is set... So if we wanted to change the process by which the agenda is set, we just bring that forward to the council, simple majority vote can change that?
That is correct.
Okay. Roger, in terms of your, your data there, do you know for sure how many of those folks are Folsom residents? Because in looking at some of the comments on the page, you know, you see some that say, well, I don't live in Folsom, but if I did, I don't live in the country, but if I did. So do you have any idea, you know, with any certainty, how many are Folsom voters?
It goes poll to poll from my page, I only pulled analytics and demographics from Folsom voters. If you were to take a poll such as like a Folsom Chat poll, theirs is 91% Folsom residents. So with, with, with their actual sample data from analytics. So it's, it's a pretty big base, as far as people interacting and the engagements from the polls themselves. I could pull detailed analytics, actually, if you would like it.
Are you proposing a two-year term or a four-year term?
That's something, for me, I think a four-year term would be appropriate, but I'd like to get the general consensus of it. My goal today is to say, yes, we have a majority that would, you know, up here that we can move forward with the idea that we will submit a ballot measure, and then have staff go back and produce some of the ideas from each individual council member of how, what they like to see for that measure, and the role of the mayor.
Okay, and then what about term limits?
Explain.
So would the recently enacted term limits also apply to the mayor?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we would have to look at, because if it's the same form of government, the mayor is still a council member. So, and Steve, you can chime in on that one, but they would still be bound to the council member term limits, correct?
That's a very good question. It really depends on what the council desires to, to do, and how the council wishes to fashion this charter amendment.
So that's just one of the many questions that if we were decided to go forward, would come back from staff to say, here's your options, right?
You can do that, yes, sir.
Okay. So I do have quite a few hypothetical questions, and I realize that this is something that could be worked out, but, but this is your baby, and you've campaigned on it, and you've posted about multiple times, so I am interested in what your recommendation is. So are you thinking that, that the 16 years, the four terms, would apply to everybody?
If I had my way, we would only have two terms each, so yeah. So whatever, right now, we have 16 terms, so I would imagine.
16 years.
Or 16 years, sorry, four terms. So in my, in my opinion, that would stand for mayor as well.
Okay, so conceivably, somebody could do eight years on the council, eight years as mayor, 16 years as mayor.
Well, I would want it to be, if you're already a council member and you run for mayor, I would want, you know, from, from when the term limits effect take place, that's where you start. So if you run, you know, like, for example, if you were to run your next election as mayor, and you did four years as a council member, that would be four of your 16 already.
Right, but if you, if you were just running for mayor for the first time, conceivably, you could do 16 years as the mayor.
I think it would just depend on, yeah, if, well, no, you'd have to run every four years, so your term would be based, but yeah, you'd be termed out over just 16, 16 years.
Okay.
I would find it more appropriate to actually establish shorter term limits, so.
Okay. Again, another kinda hypothetical. So if a sitting council member who is halfway through his or her term runs for mayor and wins, thereby creating an open council seat, how would you recommend that that council seat be filled?
I think it would just depend on how it goes. If it goes into, if, if the council decides that, you know, the ballot measure is appropriate, we wanna put that in the public hands and do a yes or no vote, that would go November 2020. The vote wouldn't be until 2022 regardless, so that wouldn't play. If there was a citizens initiative, and the vote went to March for the, for the March ballot, and then it was voted yes, then there would be a mayor ballot on 2020, and we would appropriately elect another council member in that seat. So it would still play the same way.
I think you misunderstood my question. Assuming direct election of the mayor happens going forward, you know, if I'm elected to a four-year term on the council, I'm halfway through my term. I can run for mayor because I have nothing to lose. If I don't win, I'm still on the council. If I win, I become the mayor, and my seat becomes vacant. So how do you fill that?
It won't, well.
It would become vacant.
So there are certain people on that round of, of elections that could do that, you're right. But other people are up in, in the election time of when it would be mayor, so.
Right, they would have to make a choice. But I'm talking about somebody who, I'm on the council, I'm halfway through my term, I'm not up, I decide to run for mayor, I win, my seat is now vacant. Do we have a special election to fill that seat?
We would have to, if that's the case. If that person chooses to run, that's their prerogative.
Okay. Elaine, do we have any idea how much a special election costs?
I believe the city clerk gathered some numbers from the county, and Ms. Fremantle was at a range of 400 to 800,000, is that correct?
That's correct. That was the closest estimate the county could give us at this time, was between 400 and 800,000 for a special election. For a special standalone election, yes.
If it's standalone, correct?
Correct.
So if it's, if there's any other type of, like, in March this year, or next year, there'll be a runoff, and so if that happens, what's the cost on that?
I think you guys are talking about two different things.
No, we're not, we're just saying.
No, what Sarah's talking about is, okay, as we sit here right now, if Sarah decided to run for mayor in 2020, or whatever, she's in the middle of a four-year term, we would then have to have a special election, based on the way the charter's written right now. You can, the council could choose to select someone to fill the rest of that term, we've had to do that once, but there has to be, and was it, has to be within a year of the remainder of the term, if I remember correctly? Because I think John Mezner served nine months or something? So, so the charter demands that a special election be held. So if Sarah decided to run for mayor, Sarah's seat's vacant, city has to have a special election, that cost is four to $800,000.
And what I'm saying is that if there is a, that cost would be mitigated if there is another election for that to go on, and so I'm saying it would be less cost, depending on how that goes.
No, but that's not.
But what if there's not another election?
Then, then, yeah, it would be a cost for a special election, but that's on the council person who decides to leave their term and run for mayor, it's not on giving the people a choice for mayor.
It absolutely is not on the person who leaves. I mean, look at, look at what's happening right now in the first senate district. Senator Gaines ran for Board of Equalization, he left his senate seat. Now we're having a special election to fill that. The counties pick up the cost of that. If either of, if two, two out of the five candidates win who are current assembly members, then we have to have a special election for assembly, and again, the county picks it up. So in this case, if we do have to have a special election, the city does have to bear the cost.
I'm more than comfortable in discussing how that could be handled going forward, but I am not, I, it's not, I mean, it is something to be mindset, mindful of, but it's one of those things where, you know, if we have, if we have, if you just decided to quit, you'd have a special election for a mayor. So it's not even the case of being, you know, adding one more thing to give residents the choice of a yes or no vote on a mayor, and basing that, you know, it is, it is a concern, but it's not something that I think would be appropriate as far as saying, that's, that's why you'd vote no on it. So that can happen on a whole realm of issues, you know, going forward. So there is that, that understanding as well of when this actually happens. If it did happen in March, and it came to a vote on, on the next election in 2020, you wouldn't have that issue. Everything else would be set going forward. If we put it on the November by itself, then yes, there could be that first year issue where someone could leave their seat.
No, it could happen in any year.
And then after.
It's not, it's not just the first year, I'm talking about, I had this conversation with the city attorney in Elk Grove, right? I asked him, what happens when a sitting council member wins the seat for mayor, becomes the mayor, what do you do? He said, the public always wants us to have a special election, but that costs a million dollars in Elk Grove. So what does the council do? The council always chooses to fill the vacancy.
Which, again, I'm, I'm fine looking at.
Would you be okay with the council filling the vacancy?
I actually would be okay with that conversation, for sure, because that is important, but it's not as important as giving that role to the people to decide. So for me, it outweighs, it, for me, it wouldn't, it would be a consideration I would, I would be fine with talking about, so yes.
Okay, I, I just wanna, again, I think it's really important that we talk about these what-ifs, because if you remember last year, when the council was talking about, I think the rotation of the mayor, Martha Lofgren got up, because there was a time when a, a Folsom mayor was charged, you know, with felony charges. And Martha talked about being either the city attorney or the city manager and having to say, okay, God, what do we do, what do we do? So it's important that we have these kinda what-if conversations right now.
That's why I'm bringing this up, is to have those kinds of questions.
So I guess, again, I just, I'm looking for a yes or no, would you support a special election at $500,000?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know, I don't know if I would or not, because, again, we're just, we're just hypothetically speaking. So hypothetically speaking, if the people of Folsom and the voters who elected you to this seat said, we would like that, we wanna vote for mayor, and we'd be okay with a special election, that's, that's on, that's, that's democracy, that's how it works.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you'd be okay with a special election, would you also be okay with the council appointing somebody to fill the rest of that term?
I think, I don't, it depends on how it's done. So, again, it's hypothetical. I would be okay with entertaining the conversation on that part, if we were to move forward with this, but I don't know exactly all the details and fundamentals of how that would work.
Okay, well, I guess.
Can I ask the city attorney one question?
No, hold on a second, okay, go ahead.
Steve, can you respond to Sarah's question? Because I believe that that's already defined in the charter, that if there's two years left, you have no choice, there must be a special election. And I think there's a shorter time period where if a vacancy takes place, the council can fill that vacancy.
The council, yes, Madam Mayor, the council certainly has the ability to fill the vacancy by appointment, and it's a very simple majority vote. Having said that, if you're missing one council member, you're, you're potentially dealing with a two-two tie vote.
But, and, and even if it means that you have to look for that, I believe that if it's more than a certain amount of time left on the term, that it must be filled by a special election.
Not in your city charter now.
Okay.
Yeah, not in your city charter, but by state law, the council has the ability and the option to fill by appointment, and also to call for special election.
Okay, so, again, Roger, I'm presuming that you've thought a lot about this, because this is your baby, so I'm, I'm looking for some guidance from you, okay?
Looking for detailed answers right now on something that we haven't even gotten into. So you want me to, I don't know what you're, if you're trying to pin me on a, on a specific answer, whether I'm okay spending $500,000 to $800,000 willy-nilly of taxpayer funds for a special election, that's, that's a hypothetical question, that it's not a.
Yeah, but, but those need to be answered ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, the way this was agendized was as a presentation that you were gonna make about this topic. And, I mean, you went so far as to put strong mayor question mark on two different slides, okay? So it wasn't, it wasn't agendized as workshop to test out a bunch of ideas necessarily, right? So I, I walked in here thinking that you had some conception of what this mayor job was, and it doesn't feel like that's the case.
Well, no, that's absolutely inappropriate. I absolutely understand what this position is.
So explain it to me, then. Is it a strong mayor? Question mark?
There's, there's two options at the table. So if we decide that we wanna move.
Which is your ideal solution?
I'm not sure yet. So there's, there's two scenarios, and I'll just, if you want, I might honest answer, if the council decides not to vote on this, I'll take it to a citizens initiative and put it in the people's hands.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to have the answers to all of these questions before you do that.
Like, I know. I'm giving you the answer, I'm fine with both options, as far as if we talked about filling the role, or a special election. So it just depends on, it wouldn't just depend on me, it would depend on the whole council.
Okay, so you'd be okay with the council filling a vacancy on the council? But you're not okay with the council selecting one of its own to serve as mayor?
No, I'm saying I'm okay with the conversation to find out how that would move forward. So I, I would much rather give the ability for someone to jump and run for mayor, and if that prompted a special election, then yeah, that's fine, that, that's how, that's how this should work.
Okay, let's, let's move on to an easier one. So twice last year, the council talked about possibly changing the way the mayor is selected. And during those discussions, I think the one thing that, that all five of you agreed on, probably the only thing that all five of you agreed on, is that nobody should serve as mayor their first year on the council. Andy said it would have been too overwhelming for him, you said you wouldn't have been ready. Do you still agree that, that an individual should serve at least one year on the council before becoming mayor?
I've said from day one that the mayor position should be a voted position, okay? So if you can, if you can run day one and be the mayor and be elected at large as mayor, that's fine by me. I don't like the, the back and forth internal politics of, of, you know, being a council member, jumping in and trying to figure out the ropes as far as trying to gain, you know, when you just get in, and you're trying to say, you know, I feel like I could be a good mayor, I feel like I could be a good leader on there, and you're, and you don't, you, you're just not given that opportunity or chance, that's where the issues are. You don't have that chance to do that.
Okay. So you're, you'd be comfortable with somebody who has never served on the council and has no governing experience?
I'm comfortable with giving the people the choice, yeah, absolutely, 100%. I believe in the voters of Folsom, so.
Okay, so let me rephrase this. Do you think you would have had enough knowledge of city policies, the Brown Act, all the regional committees that we sit on, to serve as mayor your first year on the council?
I would, I would say we have a very strong staff, and yeah, I, it's seeing what I've seen in the last two years and going through this, you know, me specifically, I, I think, I think I could answer that honestly and say yes.
Okay, so, so your position has evolved, because last year, you said you would not have been ready.
I said it's a lot to take in, correct? But in general, I, I've always stuck by the standpoint that I believed in term limits, I believed in a voted mayor, and that's, that's, that's my position on there. I don't believe in rotating internally on a mayor position.
Okay.
I mean, I do believe in rotating, but I don't believe selecting internally.
Can you explain what, what changes specifically you would propose to the mayor's?
Let me interrupt for just one second. I know there's plenty of you that are still out there, I did just get one speaker card. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this issue, please fill out a speaker card and get it to us. Thank you, sorry.
Can you tell us what changes specifically you would propose to make to the mayor's duties or authority?
I mean, that, that's kinda what I wanted to bring back. The biggest change, I just want it to be an elected position. That's the biggest change. There's a debate on districts, there's a debate on where elections in general are going in most jurisdictions, so that plays in this as well. This, pinning me on saying, you know, you should have every single detail and answer that the council's gonna have.
I'm not trying to pin you, Roger.
Oh, no, you are.
No, I, no, I'm not, no, I'm not. But, but I pride myself on doing my homework.
Yeah.
And I have looked at this a lot in the past month. You have campaigned on this for six years, you've posted on it multiple times on social media, so I am assuming that you have thought about this stuff, and I want to know what you think.
You bring up special elections like I'm not aware of it. Steve and I have had dialogue after dialogue on this stuff. The thing is, is that it's not, it's that, these are hypothetical situations that need more.
But, but they need to be worked out.
Correct.
Before we take the next step.
The, the next step is, as a council, are we comfortable with giving the residents of Folsom, the voters of Folsom, the choice?
I don't know, because I need to have all these things worked out, because there are advantages and disadvantages.
So you're saying, for you, your advantage is, if there is prompting a special election or not, the other, the other disadvantage is, is the role of the mayor, correct? So if I was to say, I'm proposing a ballot measure for us to leave the current form of government the way it is, but make the role position, the mayor position a voted, or a directly elected position, you'd be comfortable with that?
I've lost you, I, I don't know.
So I'm not proposing any, any changes in structure outside of just a directly elected mayor? That's where you're comfortable?
You're, you're not proposing to change our council manager form of government?
The form of government, correct.
Okay. So then I am more confused than I was before, because you did post on your Facebook page this weekend, quote, "As I see it, we have a great staff, but the question is who voters want to serve as the top city administrator? A salaried employee with no requirement to live in Folsom? Or an elected mayor selected by residents to serve residents?"
Correct.
That sounds an awful lot like a strong mayor to me.
I'm not ruling strong mayor out. My, my, my point is, is if I just come up here and say, okay, I'm, I'm open in negotiations with the topic in general, and that's why I'm, you know, I didn't bring this up here for, for it to be like this, we have to ink this thing now and put it on a ballot. I brought it up here, and, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the goal was to propose a motion to entertain the idea of a ballot measure, and then formulate the and then formulate the ballot measure as far as how council sees they want it done. So if that's, if that's not what this was, then I'm mistaken.
Okay, well, I guess the disconnect for me is that, you know, I went back and watched the council meetings from last year. I read all the Facebook posts. I read all the comments. And up until Saturday of this past weekend, you said that you were not proposing a strong mayor. You were not proposing to change any of the duties of the mayor. You were simply interested in changing the way the mayor is selected. And then you posted on Saturday, and it threw me for a complete curveball because the question of a directly elected mayor versus a strong mayor is, that's two very different concepts. And the analytics that you provided us from the Facebook page asked if people wanted a directly elected mayor. I think if you ask them, "Do you want a directly elected mayor who is a full-time mayor with a full-time salary, with a full-time staff, who is now the chief administrator of our city instead of the city manager?" You're going to get very different answers.
I think that'd actually give better results.
You would get different results, that's for sure.
So I'm not proposing that change. My, my goal is to put the vote in the voters' hands. That's the key. I'm not saying I have the end-all, say-all. We have, we have, and Ernie, the thing last year was a completely different structure. I entertain the idea of a rotated mayor, right? So right now, we're all elected at large. We have all different vote counts. We have all different bases. We come from, you know, different areas in the city. But we're choosing internally on who to structure or who to, who to be the face of the city. And that isn't representative of the voters of Folsom.
But I...
It's, it's, so...
Well, I guess my problem is I don't know exactly what you're proposing then. That's what I want to know. What, what, in one sentence, what are you asking us to put on the ballot?
I'm asking to put a ballot measure for a directly elected mayor, but not changing the current form of government. That's what I'm asking council to move forward on today. That was my motion.
Okay, so not a strong mayor at this time?
Not at this time, but here's where, this is where maybe, maybe I'm bouncing back and forth. What I'm saying is that when we get into discussions, there are several things that need to be discussed, such as that initiative, such as districting for the rest of the council members, such as veto power for the mayor. There's a lot of impacts and considerations that go along with that that aren't specific right now in a measure. So I'm giving the ability to say, "Hey, what are your thoughts? How do you want to see this move forward if you did, if you did want to see this on a ballot measure?" So I don't know. I feel like I'm making sense, but you're looking at me like I'm not.
Well, I guess not to me because, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to get you in a gotcha or anything, but it's really important to me that this is all worked out ahead of time. And so, you know, I want to know exactly what you're asking of us tonight. And I want to know, I want to know that because I think the residents need to know that also. You've asked one question, but now you're saying, "Well, I might be okay with a different question." Well, then you cannot use the results from, from this survey.
The results from my survey just simply indicate, you know, there's, there's always talk and dialogue that, you know, my, my base is drawn on on social media and that it's not the same as a, as a live person in the seat, when there are thousands of people who can't make these meetings. So I put questions, I put, I engage on topics. The specific topic is, "Would you like to vote for your mayor in Folsom?"
Yeah, okay, and I'm going to end with that because that's the question you asked.
Correct.
Would you like to vote for your mayor and have that person be a strong mayor, the chief administrator of the city with a full-time salary and a full-time staff, is a very different question. You're going to get very different answers.
I'll put that question out there. If that's what you're looking for, that's not what I'm looking to do today. So that, my, my goal is not to completely disassemble what we have in our form of government and reinvent it. My goal is to give voters the choice to vote for their mayor, simply put.
Okay, well, I guess there's, there's more than that on this presentation, so I've talked enough. I'll let somebody else go.
Mike, any questions?
Not exactly sure what to do with this. The, the...
And if you want to wait, I mean, I do have, do have a request to speak from the audience.
Yeah, let's do that.
If you want to think about it for a moment.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Do you have questions?
Okay, all right.
So, so that being said, I am... It's clear to me that the way that you ask questions can elicit very predictable responses, okay? And I think the way that you couched things just, just in the last couple of minutes where you said, "Would you like to vote for mayor?" Okay? Is a question that is rhetorical almost. Who would say no to that, given the opportunity, right? But the, but the responsibility of the council is to weigh whether or not that is a meaningful change to the way that we operate the government of the city of Folsom. And to weigh the typical way that 90 or more percent of the local governments in California operate or across the country. And to weigh what cracking that door open looks like the next time we have this discussion, or two years from now, or four years from now, or six years from now. What are the unintended consequences of cracking that door open? As it stands right now, there's elected mayors in the biggest cities in California that have a relatively strong mayor kind of setup. The city of Sacramento has a, has an elected mayor. I don't think that Folsom residents, if you ask the question, "Would you like your city government to be more like Oakland? Or Sacramento? Or San Francisco? Or Los Angeles? Or Fresno?" Would go, "Yeah, let's do, let's do that." So I don't see people clamoring for this particular change. And I think the, the results of your online polls are interesting. But I, I don't see that they are either representative of the number of people that would have to sign a petition to put this on a ballot or provided a question that's in enough depth to judge their real motivation. So I'm not, and, and what I said earlier still is the case. I thought that we were walking in here to talk about a specific proposal that you had, and it feels amorphous, like you're trying to test out ideas on the rest of us.
Well, and I respect that, but here's the thing. It took me forever to even get this into consideration. I changed it, yes, last year to a rotated position. And going into this, I'm told, "Come at us with this, but you have no resources." So as a council member, that's what I'm told. And I put this on, on here to specifically go out and say, "Hey, my poll and analytics are, I'm not, I'm not basing this where people don't understand it. People want to vote for the mayor. The majority of folks do. If you're telling me that I couldn't go out and gather these signatures, I can guarantee you, and I'd bet you I could, guaranteed." So that's, that's not even a debate. I know I can't. I know, I got elected on these, on this one, one of three points. This was one of three, and I got elected on that.
Okay, so I, I don't mean to be critical, okay?
Well, no, I accept that.
And, and I, I don't mean to, as Sarah put it, I'm not trying to capture you, you know, on tape saying anything in particular about this. The, the question remains though, is that if, over the last six years, this has been your mo, your key issue that you have been thinking about.
Of the key.
Okay, a key issue that you've been thinking of. It would seem that a more specific proposal would have come before us tonight.
Well, I'm asking, a more specific proposal will go in front of Folsom voters. I, I can't just define what...
You're asking us to help you write a more specific proposal.
So when I said, "I'd like to establish term limits on council members," it wasn't, I came with a specific term, what I wanted, and that was turned into basically staff creating ideas and bringing it back to council. And we deliberated on it, not just one night for one hour. We went through and as a team developed, even though folks may have voted no or didn't even agree with it, we came back and got details. So, you know, pardon me if, you know, I don't have exact numbers and exact details as far as if a council member stepped down and decided to run for mayor, what a special election would cost if that was there. I mean, I'm thinking, I only see two things right now that you're stating. One was that question. The other one, you're saying that there's no due diligence on this when, I mean, it's clear as day, you know, I'm asking for us to put a ballot measure for a direct-elect mayor. That's as simple as that. So that, I'm not asking to change the current form of government. I'm asking to simply get the, either, you know, I asked last year for a rotated position, but, you know, I'm asking to get the debacle of picking mayor internally and the rotated musical chairs of that selection piece, which won't be musical chairs now, but, but it will be where it's an internal process that, you know, just isn't indicative of what we should be doing. We are, we are all elected at large. We're not a board that just gets appointed, okay? So we don't pick a chairman from an appointed board. We're representative of the people of Folsom. We all individually earned our votes, but we didn't earn all the votes together. You know what I mean? Like, you shouldn't have a decision for mayor for the folks who don't support your agenda. They should have that decision, and that's the end of the day. That's, that's my goal right there, is to give them that decision.
Yeah, that argument is, is based on a false premise. The, the, you know, part and parcel of being elected to the council is the foreknowledge that as a councilperson, you're going to be involved in the discussion of who it is that gets to be mayor. Now, I've only been, I've only had one opportunity to help select the mayor. You obviously have been dissatisfied with the previous five versions of that, that, that selection process. And I, you know, I, I could understand if there was, you know, I could understand somebody feeling disenfranchised within that selection process potentially. But I don't think the process in and of itself is inappropriate.
This isn't about me feeling disenfranchised. It's not about me being mayor. It's not about any of that stuff. I could care less if I'm mayor in the next terms. I'd like the chance at it, just like every one of us would, because that's the way it's set up. If it wasn't set up that way, I'm a council member, and that's the key. So I guess, you know, that's your take on it, but it's not about that. It's about giving folks the vote, and that's it, the decision to do it, so.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. Roger, you made a comment about what happened last year relative to what staff did about the subject of term limits. Staff did, did essentially no work on the subject of term limits. The council had a discussion about term limits. There was no big elaborate staff report. The only big elaborate staff report had to do with the whole, the mayor discussion. And the council made a different choice. What happened with regard to term limits is you said you wanted eight years. I don't remember how many times we went back and forth. It ended up that the council approved putting a ballot measure on for 16 years. So you're suggesting that you came, well, you're also, you also...
The work done before that is what I'm saying, and staff prepared presentations, and we can pull the agendas, but it wasn't, and this is a different topic.
Staff did not spend weeks preparing, giving, you know, you can have one term, two terms, three terms, four terms, five terms. That was a discussion that took place amongst the council. There was, nobody needed to give us the one times four equals, two times four equals. We knew that. So there wasn't a bunch of staff time involved in the discussion of term limits. The only discussion of term limits that, that Mr. Wong had to make a comment on was when you suggested that the concept of term limits would go back to the first time someone was elected. And I'm quite certain that your objective in that was to make sure I could not run for reelection just last go-around. Mr. Wong explained to you that term limits, if they were to take effect, take effect when they take effect. It's not retroactive.
It wasn't just you. It was the whole point of term limits. It's...
Okay, having, having said that, you also made a comment that you've been trying to get this on the agenda, trying to get this on the agenda, trying to get this on the agenda. You contacted the city manager in January about putting this on the agenda. I said we could talk about it. We met on February 22nd, I believe it is. It was a Friday afternoon at 3:00, whatever time, I think that's what it was. And within eight or nine minutes of that meeting, I said, "Yes, we'll put it on the agenda." And I said, "However, if you want to put it on the agenda, it's going to be your show." And I used the example that, you know, I'm not going to have staff, you know, spend eight weeks or what, any amount of time if we didn't have consensus of this council to move forward in that direction.
That's exactly what you're saying.
So that's, that's the conversation that we're having here. And the way, and I think what Mike was trying to get at is that so far, you have started with one thing about direct election of the mayor. I also read the post over the weekend that makes it extremely clear that as of Saturday, you were talking about a strong mayor, to the point where you said, "What issue is more important than leadership? What new vision can come from a city leader who was hired specifically to react to the city council rather than proactively pursue improvement opportunities day in and day out? Apparently, The Telegraph thinks routine accountability to the voters would, would not improve the quality of local leadership. I love how these people insist voters are wise when it comes to selecting a council, but we would be unwise to select the mayor. How does that make any sense?" You then went on to talk to...
If you're going to read The Telegraph, you should read the whole article of the editorial.
I, I did. I'm reading your post.
Meant to folks. That was my response to that post.
I'm reading your post. Your post makes it very clear, you're talking about direct election of a strong mayor. You went on to say, "As I see it, we have a great staff, but the question is who wants to serve as the city's top administrator? A salaried employee with no requirements to, to live in Folsom? Or an elected mayor selected by residents to serve residents? A quick look at where some ex-city directors and ex-city managers chose to retire highlights the fact that they did not build a city that they were eager to remain in. This alone should give residents pause."
And it should.
Giving an elected mayor power is about giving a resident representative power to serve with routine accountability to the voters. Oh, and aside from placing the measure on the ballot, there are no additional costs associated with direct election of the mayor. That's your post on Saturday.
I'm giving the opportunity for council to, to put a ballot, ballot measure for a directly elected mayor without changing our current form of government. I'm giving that, that's what I'm proposing for the council. If you turn it down, turn it down.
But all I'm saying, Roger, is that Sarah asked you that question.
That's what I said, though. I said I'm hoping for it.
Sarah asked you the question. You showed both options. You're, I still don't know what it is you want. Your comment on Facebook appears that you're slapping the face of the current city manager and all of the previous city managers, along with all of the department heads that have served this city amazingly for so many years.
That's not, that's not the case.
And I won't bother to give you a list of the former city managers and the former department heads who have for a long time continued to live in the city of Folsom. And there's rare exception, Everett being the exception. Everett was hired by the city of Folsom as the IT manager. He lived in Auburn at the time because he grew up in Grass Valley. His family lives in Grass Valley to this day, and his kids live in Roseville.
Look, I don't, I can't, I have a different opinion, and it's not...
There's state law prohibits the city of Folsom requiring that the city manager or any other employee live in the city of Folsom. It's prohibited by state law.
I'm sorry, what?
It's prohibited by...
The city manager can't live in the city.
The city is, cannot be required to live in the city.
I'm not requiring it. What I'm saying is that the role isn't developed for, we're not giving the voters the choice of who represents the city. And quite frankly, it, it goes back to the point where I have an opinion, and all of a sudden, it's an attack. It's not an attack. It's an opinion. That's my opinion.
Well, tell us what your opinion is. Is it direct election of a mayor in the current form of government? Is it a strong mayor? You had two slides that showed strong mayor on it.
What my opinion is, is different than what the dais decides. I'm giving, I'm basically teeing up something that is, that could fit the appetite and, and basically have what I want to see as a council member, what I believe that the sample polling and the people I spoke, speak to want to see as well. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to throw something that I know is just going to fail. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm, I'm being open-minded and considering, and considering what the opinions are up here and, and saying, if you, that's, that's the thing. If you don't agree with it, then totally just vote no. It doesn't matter. Like, that, I'm not, I'm not up here to pitch and sell you guys. You have your own opinions and what it is. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to say it one more time.
I actually fully expected you were going to pitch and sell us, but I expected you to know what it was you were asking for.
You would tell me no. I mean, it really wouldn't matter. Like, we don't, we, ideologically, everything I say or do is typically like indicative of an attack to you. So that's why, that's why, you know, you talked, you told me, you, you all of a sudden put this on a ballot measure or the agenda, and you avoided it all of a sudden. We talked in November. We talked in December. We talked in January.
I wasn't the mayor in November.
No, but, but you knew where things were going in December and in January. I had a feeling you did. But we had this discussion prior. Two years ago, I had this discussion for the first year of my term. The second year of my term, we finally got it on the agenda, and it was voted no. And I even, I even reduced what my opinion is down to what I thought was fair for the council, which would be a rotated position. Ernie Sheldon's sitting here with the most votes out of any one of us, never been mayor, specifically because I was told he shouldn't be mayor. Multiple council members told me, "Ernie Sheldon shouldn't be mayor. The man that's done more in this city than any one of us shouldn't be mayor." That, that's, that's what I want to remove from this dais. I don't want to hear that as a council member and as someone who, he's the only one and the last out of all the council members, including yourself, that put their hand out and pulled me out from, you know, Folsom High School, from Ernie Sheldon Park when I was eight years old, looking at him, when they dedicated that park to today to be involved. You guys talk all this thing with, with "We love the Bulldogs" and "Folsom High" and "Folsom residents," but the minute they challenge you on the ballot, all of a sudden, they're a threat. So this is one of those things that gets them off of that, off of your chopping block so that people can actually make a decision for mayor.
I don't have a chopping block, so your comments are completely inappropriate. Ernie, did you have any questions?
I guess I defer to yoga elast, okay? That's because of wisdom, yeah. I guess, you know, I have, I've had extensive military service. And by virtue of that service over 33 years, I have come to the, to the realization, which I'm sure I had when I wanted it at 17, I believe in democracy. And in being a democracy, I believe that we should vote for everything, okay? And your vote should count, and you should do it. However, you can't just put a ballot issue on, on a voting agenda without being frank and honest of what it, what the devil does it mean, okay? I mean, you just, you just cannot do that. And so I, I sat there today and thought a lot about what, what I would ask Roger. This is a very serious situation. This is not something you just do when you wake up in the morning and say, "I'm going to do this." It doesn't work. There's a lot of questions. We heard a lot of them tonight, but there are a lot of questions that I had before you even make a decision. you even make a decision. And I'm not, I'm not here to vote and say, put it on, on the ballot, and everybody out there, 50,000 voters think, oh, we're going to vote, and then we find out it's not feasible to do it. You check to be sure it's feasible, and then you put it out there. Or you make it feasible. If it's not feasible, fix it and make it so the voters can vote on it. I have no problem with that. But I have questions of when do we do the voting? How long is the term? What's the duties? Is it a compensated position? All that says maybe it's a strong mayor, maybe it's not a strong mayor. Another question we always have to ask, and sometimes we seem to forget it, will our actions hurt the city? We should ask it every time we think of something. Well, what we're going to do, is it going to hurt the city and the people in the city? If we have an election by mayor at some time and it's done correctly, I think it can work. But this, I saw something that said the election was 1990. I've been here since 85, and I can only remember this rotation of mayors. And we never voted between 85 and 90, I can tell you that. You know, things should be changed if they need to be changed. And then they should be changed with full disclosure and transparency. I don't want to put somebody on the ballot, say, I'm going to vote for the mayor, and I'll tell you later what you voted for. No. If I go in there, I want to know what am I voting for? I'm voting for a guy that's going to take over the thing, going to do the job that we're doing now. I think we got to understand that, you know. I would say, and Roger's the expert in all the, all the numbers, I just gut feel, I would say there's probably 60% plus in this town does not know what the hell and how we vote our mayor. They probably think it's being voted some other way than what we're voting it. Okay? So when you ask them, you know, I believe Mike had the answer to that one question. You can ask a certain question, and you're always going to get a positive. Do you believe in motherhood? Of course. Do you like apple pie? Yeah, I do. Okay? Odds are you're going to get a high percentage of yes. So if you say, would you vote for mayor, chances are you're going to get a pretty positive answer until you tell them what it constitutes. Okay? And it's how much it's going to cost. And if you throw a half a million dollar figure out to make the mayor, you probably get another consideration of what you're going to hear. And the reason the people, I bet you there's so many people in this town that wouldn't give a damn if you voted for mayor. They're happy. They're living a good life, things are good, the city's running well. Why do they want to upset the apple cart? You would think a rotation would be fair. Roger referred to me, okay? But there was somebody else ahead of me that wasn't having, didn't have it fair, and that's our current mayor. She should thank the good Lord that I showed up because she had a chance to be the mayor because the boys' club did not let a woman be mayor. Okay? It just wasn't going to happen. But when Ernie showed up and that my rotation is my turn, in 2012, I was told you can't run for reelection and have an office. And I was the vice mayor. I said, oh, I didn't know that. I said, that's interesting because Andy just became, reelected as the vice mayor. I said, it must be different rules for different people. It was strictly a gender problem with Carrie. But I guess I looked a bad substitute for Carrie, so Carrie got to be the mayor that year. And I had no problem with that. She waited 12 years. Her people were calling me up, saying, vote for her, vote for her. I said, I have no problem. I'd go for it. And I did. But it doesn't work well. I think at some point in time, when we analyze all the goods and bads about election by mayor, then we can make a decision. And I don't think this council should, should put anything on the ballot until we know all the ramifications of what happens when that, when that gets on there. I don't know. I, we need to know more. We need, maybe we need, the mayor mentioned when she first took over, maybe we need to look at the charter amendment. Maybe it's not only the election of the mayor that we need to look at. Maybe we need to look at a lot of other things in the charter. Everything should be looked at once in a while. Okay? Maybe we need to call this and look at, and we look at the charter. Now, the only thing, I'm going to close my comments because I think we were premature, I think Roger's attention, hopefully, are good. I always, I gave Roger his chance, and I would give anybody else a chance if it happened that way. That's, young people are fine. They become old people like me, okay? But they start out real good, and then they just gradually fade away. Okay? But, well, now, maybe I should not be so objective. Maybe the city will really entertain an 86-year-old guy that occasionally might have a little dementia and could run for mayor because I'm not running for this job, okay? Hey, maybe I better change my remarks, okay? Never too early to campaign. Holden has told me that. But I will say one thing that I think is wrong. I read the editorial in The Telegraph the other day, last week, and that editorial said that, don't change nothing, everything's good and all this, and, well, that's fine. They have their opinion. But what they said, that when you guys elect us up here, you sort of give up something, right? You give up the ability to think and vote, and you let us do it for you. No. We represent you. We don't replace you. And people don't understand government, I think. I think sometimes the longer you stay, the more you may have to fall into that trap. Okay? So I'm definitely for people to vote, but only when we have described all the ramifications of what that vote means. Okay? We don't want to give them something and end up something else, you know? And Roger's always going to be suspect. He's running for reelection. Maybe he's running for mayor. I don't know if the mayor's on the ballot. It's going to be, anybody that advocates a change or a new idea is going to be suspected in motion. I can say I'm not because I'm not running. It's absolutely clear. I'm hoping to be here when the elections come up. So I think it's premature right now, but I would like to recommend to the, to the mayor that we give a group and take a look at the, how does the charter? You know, one thing I used to tell the previous council, I'd say, you know, a lot of you guys and gals are a hell of a lot better mayor than you are a councilman. Now, does that make sense? Yeah, it makes sense. Somehow they focus more and they do a good job. I have yet to complain about a mayor that, since my 10 years here, that didn't do a good job. They did an excellent job. Okay? So I feel that we should, it's premature to, for this council to vote tonight, to put anything on the ballot. But I'm not saying that that's not a good idea, but it's only a good idea after we've vetted the complete ramifications of what we're doing. And Roger didn't present it, but that's okay. And I don't think staff need to. I think we can do it in a series of workshops if we want to do it. Okay? But I think it should be part of a charter review, not just, just the mayor. But do I think it worked? No. Am I, did I cry in my mouth because I didn't get to be the mayor when I should have been? Three times the chance? No. I didn't sign up for this job just to be the mayor and be happy with the title. I signed up to serve the people of this town, and that's what I'm doing to the best of my ability. So whether I'm the mayor or I'm a councilman makes no darn difference to me. Okay? But I think, I think it requires more. And I don't want to get into talks about, you know, Roger says, I, on the, Jim did all the work for us for the rotation of mayor. His formula was more than I could handle, but it, so nothing, anything you do I doesn't get done. It has to be we. So I think we, the council, can take another look at this subject and give it a fair thing. I don't think none of these people, including me, are threatened by not being the mayor and the people are going to elect somebody else. But there are some differences that you got to consider. What if somebody comes in that gets elected and never sat on this council? Never sat on a commission? Believe it or not, you know, I had 23 years of commission time before I got on this council, and I still had a lot to learn. So we have to think hard before we do this. I'm all for it as far as my military says, that's what you fought for, to give the people the right of representation. But not without full disclosure. So that's about all I'm going to say.
So just on that point, I mean, my, my goal today was not to give something that's vague and, you know, with no base to the, to the voters of Folsom. My goal here was to see if there's an appetite for this, to do what you, exactly what you're saying. That's why I listed everything that we've had prior on this discussion. So I don't know, and I kind of feel like you turned that into like a, and maybe you didn't do it on purpose, but you turned it into like, you don't have all the answers, you're unprepared, you are this. My goal was to give something that's balanced, that has all, it's, it's open so that we can all formulate something to give to the Folsom voters if there's an appetite for it. If there's not, that's what this was for. So I'm not, I'm not proposing we, you know, we go, I'm not running, I haven't said I'm running for reelection, number one. This isn't about reelection. It's not about me as mayor either. It's about the position itself and what it means to Folsom residents. You said 60% probably don't even know, and then you said, we're elected to make that decision? That, I mean, that's, that's an oxymoron right there. So we have two council members who think, one, you're elected to make that decision, one, that the people who voted for you probably don't know you'll make that decision. It makes no sense. It needs to be defined, and that's what I was trying to get to today. I wanted to get the position out from us into the voters' hands. How, what does that look like to the council? So maybe that is a workshop, and I'm fine with that. I'm totally fine with that.
I think it is a workshop. And let me, let me throw a caution to you. You're young, I can do it. When Holden was a young man, and I was probably as younger, or maybe.
You have Holden as the speaker.
He had me on, I think. I think I sat in front of a store somewhere and did a petition. I think it was, it was slow growth. He probably choked on it this year. But that's not an easy job, folks. Anybody that sat in front of a store and tried to get people to sign properly and not illegally. So Roger, when you say you're going to go take it out to the people, buddy, let me, let me tell you, that's not an easy chore. Okay? They may be all rah 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 for the first couple of days, and after they get tired of being hot or cold, they're not around.
I know how hard it is, and I don't give up.
I just caution you.
That's kind of a separate issue, and I appreciate your comments. So I am going to ask Bob to come up.
Oh, no.
Still the only speaker. None of you people want to talk about this? Please get a speaker card instead of calling somebody and complaining about it tomorrow.
Mayor, before I begin, I wonder if we might have Section 2.04 back up on the screen. That was the section that described the, gave a summary of the duties of the mayor. Good, because I want to address that in a minute. I really have three points to make. First is, I want to sort of ask rhetorically, how did we get to this particular type of selection process? What's it modeled on, if anything? Secondly is.
Are you asking questions? Are you going to tell us the answer to that?
I'm going to give you my opinion.
Okay.
Second is, I'm just trying to frame what I'm going to talk about so you can go to sleep till I get to the one you like, see? Second one is, I'm going to address what I consider an inaccurate and incomplete description of the current role of the mayor. And then thirdly, I'm going to make a suggestion about how a council member who wants to be mayor, I have a recommendation, having been mayor, how you get there so that those of you who have not been mayor will have a chance to be mayor. So first off, just think of Intel. You own one stock of Intel. You want to elect the president and CEO of Intel. You want to elect the chairman of the board of directors of Intel. Guess what? You won't be voting for him. Suppose you own a million shares in Intel. Guess what? You still won't be voting for the chairman of the board or the CEO or the president. If you own 10 million shares, you won't. The board of directors elects the chairman of the board, elects the president and CEO. That's the way corporations that are publicly traded operate, and that's the model that our council is based on. It assumes a representative form of government where the voters elect, directly elect, the five council members, and then the council members select among their membership the persons to lead the council during the following year. That's how we've always done it, from the beginning of this city till now, and that's the basic logic of it. The second point I want to make, if I didn't lose my place here, which I may have, is this description of the duties of the mayor is incomplete and inaccurate. If you go to 2.04 of the city charter, you will see that there are 14 different powers of the mayor that are delineated, and some of the most important ones are not included. And sadly, I, if you bear with me, I have to put my glasses on to read them because I can't read the small stuff. But it, but it's not insignificant. So the mayor shall, A, recommend city policy; B, recommend to the council appropriate and necessary legislation; C, recommend programs for the physical, economic, social, and cultural development of the city; D, be responsible for public relations activities and represent the city for ceremonial purposes; E, represent the city in intergovernmental relations personally or by a representative designated by the mayor; F, preside at meetings of the council; G, establish and dissolve ad hoc committees, that's one that you're dealing with right now; H, possess the authority to suspend implementation of any action taken by the council, excepting an emergency ordinance; I, provide leadership and marshal citizen participation in the city activities and civic affairs; J, report to the public from time to time on the affairs of the city; K, be in possession, be and possess the authority and attributes of a council member; L, meet regularly and as appropriate with the city manager for the purpose of providing policy guidance relative to the actions of the council, expressing the desires of the council and its members, and to monitor the administrative implementation of council policies; M, together with the council at least annually, evaluate the performance of the city manager; and last but not least, N, possess such authority and perform such duties as are granted or required by this charter or by the council, which, which duty shall not conflict with other provisions of the charter. The point of all of that long litany is, the mayor is a powerful position in the city of Folsom. It was adopted by the voters in a charter in June of 1990. I'm proud to say that I, former Mayor Glenn Fate, and one or two other living souls in our town today, were on that charter commission. We studied all types of mayors. We considered whether to have a strong mayor. This is what we adopted. Those 14 points, which I see are only summarized there.
Bob, just, just to get to 1990, what, how was the mayor selected from 1946 up to 1990 when the charter was adopted?
The way it is now. It was under the general law. You know, the general law, I think in the 50s allowed for an independent election of a mayor in a general law city, but Folsom never changed it. I mean, we've always done the same. And the, the logic of it is that in order to be the mayor, you got to count to three, and that means you have to be able to get along with your colleagues and work constructively with your colleagues to get the people's work done. That's the basic logic of this system. The last thing I would say is, you want to be the mayor? That's the way to be the mayor. That's the way Steve Miklos was mayor. That's the way Andy Moran was mayor. That's the way Eric King was mayor. That's the way Jeff Starkey was mayor. That's the way Mayor Howell has been mayor in the past. That's the way I was mayor. That's the way Jeff, sorry, Glenn Fate was mayor. That's just the way you become mayor, is you work with your colleagues, you work diligently, and you show your stuff, and if they see leadership, they'll be more than happy to have you do all those 14 things. If you don't do those things, if you don't measure up, then of course, they don't want you to be mayor, and it's, doesn't make sense to trash can this system that's worked so well to adopt a new one when we don't even know how it'll work. And last but not least, we haven't identified problems. Nobody has yet identified problems that will be solved by having a strong mayor. And I think that has to be the starting point if you're going to promote the idea of a strong mayor. You have to identify and articulate what are the problems that need to be solved. I haven't heard, this is the third time in the last year, this has been before the council. I have yet to hear what the problems are.
I can give you that answer right now.
The last thing I will say, which I'll say for next time, we can have a discussion, which I don't want to bore you with today, about what a strong mayor in Folsom has been because Folsom has had a strong mayor. I won't bore you with it tonight. Ernie Sheldon and I both know what it, what it entailed in Folsom in the past, and I don't want it, and I don't think Ernie wants it, and nobody who dealt with that on a day-to-day basis wants that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
May I just add?
Yes, you may.
Just to teach Bob, the other thing you left out, Bob, that everybody you named were all successful candidates sponsored by the chamber. Okay? Every single one of them, other than Eric King, I sponsored him the first time, the second time--
Well, it can't be every single one other than. The point is, every single one was not sponsored by the chamber.
Yeah.
No, you were talking about Eric.
Well, Eric was the first time, but I think he was the second time. I lost him. Sorry.
Anybody else have any other comments?
I do. Roger, I actually want to thank you for putting this on the agenda because I think policy discussions like this are fun, and they're important. And, and now you know how my kids feel when I give them the third degree, and my son tells me I'm the most strict of any of his, the moms of his friends. But, but why I personally like discussions like this is because, for me especially as a new council member, it prompts me to do my research, right? It forces me to examine our charter, to research its history, to look at how other cities do things, and to think critically about why we do what we do. And like I said, I've been thinking about this a lot. I've done a lot of research in this past month. And I think really, the only conclusion is, there is no perfect way to select the mayor. Whether you have a rotation, whether you do a direct election of the mayor, or whether you choose from within like we do, they all have their advantages and their disadvantages. So the two questions for me are, do the advantages of our current system outweigh the disadvantages? I believe they do. And is there a compelling reason to make a change? And I haven't heard one yet. I, I think the, the thing that I, I really like about our, our current system is that according to the charter, the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. And that means that at any time, we can remove that person as mayor. If the person goes off the rails, if they're, you know, not, not working well with their colleagues, if they've, you know, get arrested, as has happened in this city, we can remove that person at, at any time. You know, Bob touched on this a little bit. I was fortunate to get my hands on, on Bob's binder from the original charter committee that was formed in 1989 and made its recommendations in 1990. Bob doesn't know it, but I actually made copies of his binder, so I have my own now. This binder has all of the meeting minutes, the agendas, and the different versions of the charter. And, and I read those, and he's right. They, they had five subcommittees, one of which was chaired by Glenn Fait, and I was able to sit down with him and have coffee. And the different subcommittees recommended direct election of the mayor, making the highest vote getter the mayor, having the council select the mayor but to a four-year term. And ultimately, they rejected all those ideas, and, you know, we have the system that we have today, and I, and I do think it's worked well for us. The other thing that I think is worth noting, again, you know, I kind of think these policy discussions are fun, but I went to the Department of Finance website. They have an Excel spreadsheet of all 482 cities in California listed by population in descending order. So I looked at the cities, the 50 cities above Folsom in population and the 50 cities below Folsom. So you're talking about the, the 100 cities closest to Folsom in terms of population. I went to every single one of those websites. If I couldn't find it on their website, which I hope we have it on our website because it's, there was nothing worse than going to a website and not finding what I needed, and I had to call up the city clerk.
Have you slept in the last month and a half?
But I, I want to tell you this because I think it's, it's worth noting.
And she doesn't even drink coffee, just saying.
Of those 100 cities in California closest to Folsom in terms of population, 42% directly elect their mayor, but 58%, almost 60%, do not. And I want to acknowledge that there is one disadvantage to our current system. It's been touched on tonight, and that is not everybody is guaranteed to serve as mayor, and that can create some hard feelings. But this is not supposed to be about us as individuals. This is supposed to be about what's in the best interest of the city. And, you know, Ernie, we share something in common. In my four years on the school board, I never served as the board president, although twice I served as the vice president. And, you know, when it was kind of quote "my turn" to become the president, we had a superintendent who announced her retirement. We conducted a nationwide search to find a new superintendent, and then we hired that superintendent, and she kind of had her honeymoon period. So for those two years, the board thought it was in the best interest of the district to have a president who had more experience than I did. Could I have done the job? Absolutely, I could have done the job. But do I feel like my influence was diminished because I never served as board president? Not at all. As a matter of fact, if it did anything, it freed me up so I could stir the pot a little bit, which I like to do. Finally, I, I do want to say something, Roger, and I, I know you, you've talked to people and you've done your polls. I just want to share my experience. I realize I've only been in this seat for three and a half months, but my husband and I visited almost 12,000 houses during the campaign, and people have talked to me about traffic and development and the water runoff down their street, and parking at Vista Del Lago, and park bathrooms that are not clean, homeless, even too many mosquitoes south of 50. I got any of that about that last week. But not one single person has said to me, you know what I think that the issue is in Folsom? We need to directly elect the mayor. Nobody has said that. So again, I'm really glad that we had this discussion. If you want to borrow this binder, if anybody wants to borrow this binder, I will loan it to you. But so far, I have not heard a compelling reason that we need to make a change. And maybe there was a little bit of a disconnect in terms of what you thought you were presenting and what we thought we were getting, and--
100% there was.
We, well--
Because that's--
We can work on that going forward.
And honestly, that, it's, it gets to a point where, you know, I'm, I'm not living and dying by this, by this item. This isn't something, I attack things daily, traffic related, homeless related. I, I go through just like you do as a council member, just like everyone on here at the DIAS does in their position. So this is one thing that from the beginning I felt needed to be corrected within the city, and I feel like I have a lot of support for it. And, you know, maybe, maybe you didn't bring that up, so it wasn't a point of, a pain point for folks because it wasn't brought up. So just saying, I mean, I spent the better part of eight, six years during that time doing the same thing you did, losing several times, and talking to even more people physically, in person, on the phone, via social media. I mean, it, it's endless. So there was, I think there is a huge disconnect, and I, and I don't feel that, you know, this was, to Bob's point, you know, he asked what, I don't even know if he's still here.
Uh huh, he's back there.
He's back.
Direct election of the mayor gives accountability to the position. It becomes reactive and responsible to the people of Folsom. So in this day and age in politics, the reason why it takes somebody like me to get elected self-funded is because I have to be self-funded. I'm not, I don't have a special interest that is able to get me into where I need to go so that I can afford to do this job. I have to fight and claw my way to do it so that I represent the people of Folsom, and that's a big problem that we have with the way this has worked. That's why I hit term limits. That's why I hit voted mayor, because it, it becomes a point where the accountability isn't there. And it becomes a point where, you know, he said that all you got to do is earn the, and gain the support of your colleagues. From day one, I mean, if you want to talk about like, and I don't know how to do this with, and I won't do this actually, I'm not going to do what I was going to do, but from day one, that support doesn't exist for people coming to this DIAS. It never exists, and it doesn't, you can't build it the way that, you know, it's the, the dream that Bob put out there was, was done, because that's not how it works. It doesn't work like that. So with that being said, the only way to get rid of that is to remove it and give it to the people. So whether you agree with that or not, totally fine with it. This whole thing, coming and throwing arrows about, you know, doing your data and all this stuff, yeah, it would, there's several different things that can happen depending on how we do it, which is what I was hoping that we could look at as a, with staff's help and everything as it, if there was the appetite for it to go through. If there's not, so be it.
The only thing that I'm going to respond to, and then I'm going to turn off my microphone, is that the special interests did not walk precincts for me. That was me and my husband.
I'm not, I, I, that's not a direct attack on you. I'm not saying you didn't walk and do your work, and that's not it at all. I'm saying the positions are filled in, and it's hard and impossible to get rid of the, the outside special interest that happens with this position, especially today in today's political realm, so.
And, and I'm just going to, I'm going to kind of reiterate Sarah's comment. Sarah, and Mike, and I are sitting here because we worked very hard, we did well in debates, we knocked on doors, and we had people that were willing to support us. And I'm sorry that you will, that you seem to continue to suggest that we don't have the support of the people. We were elected by the people to serve in these positions, and it's not because the Chamber of Commerce or anybody else that you want to blame went out and bought votes for us. We are here because we have earned the respect of this community, and in my particular case, served this community for the last 25 years. So I'm, I'm sorry that you feel that you had to work as hard as you had to work and feel like you had no support. You're here now. We have, have tried to welcome you despite, at least in my case, near constant attacks. We have worked to get in these seats. We are not here beholden to anybody in this room or outside this room. We're beholden to the voters and the people that live in the city of Folsom.
And give them a choice for direct election.
And I'm sorry that, that apparently we have a disagreement, but I'm going to go along with Bob. We can look at other cities in the region whose name I won't say, but they have chosen for whatever reason to do direct election of the mayor. They have directly elected a mayor, and for the course of the last eight years, in one particular instance, with two different individuals, that mayor of that particular location has not had the support of any of the council members. So Bob's exactly right. You can be directly elected as the mayor, or anybody can be directly elected as the mayor, but if you don't have the support of any of your colleagues, what's the point? The city moves, the city spins in a circle because you want to build a park and they want to do something else with it. You want to build one thing and other people want to worry about traffic. You don't want to do development, other people do want to do controlled development. When you've got one person that doesn't have the support of at least two other people on the council, that person may, may as well not be there, and it puts the city in a, in a bad situation. So you've got, and I, and I think you're also giving more control or more, you're putting more weight on the mayor's control of the agenda. There's been very few things, I don't know, Elaine, you've been around, and this is, this is my third go-around as the mayor. I could probably count on two hands in the total of, you know, two and a quarter years so far that I've served as the mayor, where the vast majority of the council agenda is really driven by projects that are coming through, budgets that have to be done. It's not as if me, or Bob Holdenis, or Steve Miklos, or Andy Morin, or, or Eric King, or Jeff Starksy, or Glenn Fait, or anybody that has served as the mayor of this city over the course of the last 30 years has sat down and said, these are the things that are going to be on the agenda for the next six months. So if you think that's what happened, that's what happens, that's not what's happening. So the only thing I think that I've made a specific request about adding to the agenda that wasn't effectively being staff-driven is this item. So there's, you know, your comments have been a little bit misleading, and I'm hoping that my comments clarify a little bit about the, the mayor's so-called control of the agenda. So.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to motion that we suspend debate and call for a motion to do something with this--
Okay.
--in interest of it being pretty late.
Does anyone want to make a motion on this item?
Well, the one I'd make, you probably want to approve because I'd like to, I'd like to have a charter review of this council.
That's, that's great that you want to do that, but that is not the agenda item.
I won't do nothing.
Can't we wait till we deal with the traffic?
Okay, so that was a very interesting discussion, but even, even you don't want to make a motion?
I do, but here's the thing. I don't want to make a motion, a baseless motion, because it's, it's, I'm, I'm fine saying this needs more work. So what I would propose is that we have, we do more work for it. You know what I mean? Like we, we--
Roger--
--have a direct election.
As, as I explained, this was, this was your issue to explain, and I explained this to you, I believe personally, when you and Elaine and Steve and I met. If a council member wants to bring something forward, that's great. Make the suggestion. If we get concurrence from the other council members that we think this is worthy to explore, that's great. And the example that I used to you was that Sarah and I have had a couple of conversations about having a code of conduct for the council members, and as opposed to Sarah and I asking Elaine, or Steve, or anybody else on city staff to put together a draft document for the council to consider, we're not doing that. Sarah and I are going to write a draft document. We are going to bring it to this council. We will give you copies, the, the rest of you copies of it in advance, and we will discuss it, but we will do the legwork. I, you know, right now, it doesn't appear that you have the support to move forward with a proposal for the council to put direct election of the mayor on the ballot. So no, we're not going to have another discussion about it unless three of you decide tonight that you want to move forward with direct election of the mayor, because we're not going to continue to have this conversation over and over and over again and have staff spend a whole bunch of time continuing to investigate something that right now, it doesn't look like the council is willing to support.
Yeah, that is exactly why I don't want to put a motion forward, so it is what it is. We've had our, our dialogue, I guess, so.
Okay. Then I guess we will move on to city manager comment.
In the interest of time, I will pass on my comments tonight.
Okay. Mike.
Ditto.
So I assume that we'll get, at the next council meeting, we'll get everybody's update on their other regional activities? Okay. Ernie?
Believe it or not, I am going to tell you something ahead of time. Tonight, we had the ad hoc committee on the parking problem, but I'm going to ask you politely at some point in time shortly that we establish a workshop, and the purpose of that workshop is for this city and this council to determine what are we expecting to happen to the historic district? Because if you don't open your eyes and look around, we are losing our historic district. Okay? Now you can--
Are you, Ernie, are you talking about doing that separately from the parking issue?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. So I'm, that's my comments now. I'm just telling you ahead of time, I will talk to it to you and ask you to put a workshop on.
Can we talk about that later in the week, or?
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it? Roger?
I'm good, thanks.
Sarah?
Just one quick thing. I am the first senate district's representative on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Folsom State Prison and California State Prison Sacramento. The city of Folsom does have two representatives, but they're not here, so I told them I would report out. Just to let everybody know that those Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, they're mandated. Every prison in the state of California has to have one. They are actually open to the public. You get to tell your kids you're going to prison, and then, you know, that's what I do. I'm going to prison, see you when I get out. The next meeting, in case anybody wants to come, is May 28 at 9:00 AM in Larkin Hall at Folsom State Prison. Thank you.
May I get out? No, go.
I'm just going to remind everybody to please drive carefully. If you're out walking at night, please dress in clothing that makes you visible to passing motorists and bicyclists, and drive like your parents are behind you. With that, we are adjourned at 10:05.